Okay, counsel, it is officially seven P M. And we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the stands, one nation, without borders, with liberty and justice as our strong.
Testing, testing. Test. Okay, counsel, we'll go ahead and take roll call. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
All counselors present in a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you so very much. Okay, up next, we have the agenda approval. Counselor Veho.
Mayor, I approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have the citizen comments. Since we have so many people here today, we're going to share with you how the process is going to work today. So on the agenda, you'll see we have an item that we're going to have a discussion about Main Street, and it's a little bit further down on the agenda. So for those of you who are wanting to make comments about the streets, we're going to ask that you just hold your comments until that time in that segment of the agenda, and then that way we can address that issue. For those of you who filled out comment cards and your items are not really related to Main Street, what we'll do is have you come up and then you can just make your comments. I do ask that you be mindful, thoughtful, and considerate in the words that you use, and I do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you are still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you at that time to end your comments, okay? We do have a clock right there that will give you an idea of how close you're getting to your three-minute mark. We do assure you that if you filled out a comment card and you have something you would like to say, we will make sure that everyone get an ample opportunity to say what's on their mind, okay? Ms. Brooks.
I wasn't sure if maybe there were a few comment cards that it was unclear if it was related to Main or not.
Yes, we have a couple of them, a few of them. Jeff Myers, I'm not for sure if yours was related to the Main Street or not. If so, I'll put it on the Main Street. Is it Main Street? Okay, good. Run Quintana, I'm not for sure if yours related to Main Street or not, but if it is, is it? Okay, so I'll make sure you get to the Main Street part, okay? And then Dale Jordan, I think yours might be related to like parking, snow removal, but if it's related to Main Street too, it is, okay, so I'll make sure you're there. Looks like all of the comment cards I have are related to Main Street. So we'll move on down the agenda unless you have, unless we, let's go ahead and check our virtual audience as well. Ms. Martinez, you want to check and give them instructions of how to raise their hands to virtual people so that we can recognize any of those who would like to make comments other than about Main Street at this time so we can give them an opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir, if you're on the Zoom app, you'll just use the raise your hand feature to speak and say whatever you want to about anything that's not Main Street right now. If you're on the telephone, you'll raise your hand by dialing star nine. I don't see anybody raising their hand, mayor.
Okay, Jim, is there any way you could turn up the volume some kind of way so we can make sure that everyone can hear, okay?
I just, I just did.
You just did, okay, all right. Is that better? Okay, good, thank you. And counsel tonight, please, let's talk into the mics so that they can understand and hear us, okay?
And mayor, just real quick, can you turn your voting thing off because it's preventing those mics from going on?
Sure. Are we good? So do we have anyone from the Zoom audience who would like to make regular citizen comments?
No one's raised their hand, mayor. Or actually, one person just raised their hand right now.
Okay.
It's Casey McCoy, so I'm going to allow him to talk.
Okay. And could you start the clock for me?
Okay, can, can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. And I, I just wanted to verify, this is making comments about, about the Main Street, like comments and concerns right, right now at this time?
No, not at this time. Later on in the agenda, we'll take comments about Main Street. But if you could stay on the line, when that time come, we'll make sure you're invited in to make those comments.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so seeing that I don't have anyone here in the audience who wanted to make just general comments and seeing that we don't see anyone with their hands raised at this particular time, we're going to go ahead and move on down the agenda to the next item, and that is going to be consent calendar A, Counselor Veho.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Sergeant.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Brawls.
Yes, want to point out that I'm still pleased that the general fund sales tax is improving. I mean, the increase this year, year-to-date is fifteen point seven percent. And I think that's good and speaks well of our city, so I just want to point that out.
Thank you for pointing that out, Counselor Brawls. Okay, we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. I'm going to start voting here. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to the next item on the agenda, Development Services, the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, mayor. Rachel is on her way to address it.
Okay, you will.
Good evening, mayor and council. So this is the second reading. It's regarding being able to park an R V on your own property in your own driveway. So all it's changing in our U D C is that you used to have to park behind your front property line. Many people don't have a driveway that goes all the way behind their house, and they don't have an ability to do that. So after taking it to planning commission and at the suggestion of council, we re-written the language so that you can park, as long as you're not obstructing sightlines or violating the traffic code, you can park anywhere on your property with your R V.
Okay, thank you so much, Rachel. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please feel free to come up to the podium and voice your concerns. And then we'll go back to the virtual audience and see if there's anyone there as well who would like to comment during this public hearing. Okay, I don't see anybody in the audience who would like to make any comments at this particular time. So we'll go ahead and invite the Zoom attendees to make any comments in regards to this hearing. If you can give them instructions, I should appreciate it.
Yes, sir, if you're on the Zoom app, use the raise your hand feature to speak on this ordinance. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine.
Ms. Martinez, I don't see anyone with their hands raised right now. So in seeing that I don't see anyone in the audience at the podium, I am going to officially close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel, Counselor Carson.
Mayor, if nobody has any questions, I move that we adopt ordinance fourteen dash twenty-one.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay. You can start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda falls upon the police, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa County Sheriff's Office for provisions of mental health services to peace officers through D O L A, Peace Officers Mental Health Grant. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, second reading for this M O U between the Alamosa County Sheriff's Office, and this is strictly related to providing mental health services to police officers. Do you have any questions for me, since we've talked about this once before?
No, thank, thank you so very much, chief. So what we're going to go ahead and do, once again, we'll open up the public hearing for anyone who would like to make any comments in regards to this second reading ordinance. Feel free to come up to the podium, voice your concerns. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time. So we'll go ahead and invite the Zoom attendees, Ms. Martinez.
Okay, if you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this ordinance, use the raise your hand feature. If you're on the telephone, dial star nine.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, I don't see anyone with their hand raised on Zoom. So, and I don't see anyone in the audience who would like to come up and make any comments. So we'll go ahead and close this public hearing, and we'll bring it back to counsel. Counselor Carson.
Mayor, if there's no questions, I move that we adopt ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between A S O and A P V.
I second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? No. Okay, please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, chief. Okay, that brings us down to the next item on the agenda. City council and staff came to an agreement that they would like to have further discussion and give the community an opportunity to make any comments that they have along with our city staff, making sure that they're able to explain some of the things that have been going on pertaining to Main Street. So this is the segment of the agenda to where we're going to allow Ms. Brooks to give a brief overview of how we've gotten to where we are at this particular point with Main Street. And then after she finishes, we're going to go through the comment cards. We're going to allow everyone an opportunity to have their three minutes, and we won't end this meeting until you've had an opportunity to speak. For those of you who are on Zoom, don't hang up, don't get off or sign off because we will give each one of you an opportunity to speak as well. So we just want to make sure that everyone knows that you, if you're here, you filled out a comment card, you have something on your mind to say, we will give you your opportunity. Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, mayor. And some of these, this might be the only slide, is the, the script is a little bit smaller, so I'll read some of it. But I wanted to start this presentation to try to help answer the question of how did we even get to this point? And to provide some background information. So getting to this point in time actually started back in twenty sixteen when the city decided to update its comprehensive plan. We held a lot of public meetings, we held surveys, and it was looking at all the different surveys or the services that the city provides and what the community envisioned for the future of Alamosa. Some of those questions were specific to economic development as well as the downtown. And those that are up there highlighted are specific that led to where we are today. So the first one on the top left is what is the most important for economic development in Alamosa? The third ranked option was a vibrant downtown. And so we knew at that point that we needed to spend some time focusing on the downtown as an economic generation, a generator for our community. The other question to the right of that was when the downtown is designed, how should it be designed? And the option was designed for cars and efficient traffic circulation, which received eleven percent support from the public? Or should it be designed to balance cars, pedestrians, and cyclists? And as you can see overwhelmingly, the residents wanted that design to be a more balanced design. The other question was which two strategies would have the most impact on improving the appearance and function of downtown? Now, the number one was the improved building facades and maintenance, but then the next ones are those that are highlighted, which is to improve pedestrian bike mobility and safety, create pockets of green space downtown, increase amount of seating and public spaces, and allow and encourage sidewalk dining and displays. So this is where some of the seeds started to be planted in regards to our downtown. Following the conclusion and adoption of the comprehensive plan in twenty eighteen, so Holly, if you want to go to the next slide, thank you. In twenty eighteen, we began a process to do, do our downtown development plan. And similar to the comp plan, we had a lot of public outreach, it was very public-driven. It began in May of twenty eighteen, it was adopted in twenty nineteen. We did have a sixteen-member advisory board. We advertised every part of the process through that sixteen-month process through every means we had possible. We really wanted to encourage people to be aware of what was going on and to engage and to try to provide some feedback. In addition to all of our efforts, the process was covered multiple times and received front-page coverage on the newspaper. Holly, if you want to go to the next slide. We did receive significant public input. There's six meetings that were spread throughout the whole process. We also had focus groups, especially with the downtown businesses. The meetings averaged around thirty attendees. You can see pictures of some of the meetings we had, some of the focus groups with the business owners. You can also see at those meetings, people were literally voting on the type of the designs that we were going to have. They were working in groups to identify priorities. And, you know, it was a very good public input process. Holly, the next. Additionally, from a meeting perspective, we had two different community surveys that we advertised both through the utility bills, but then also through social media, press releases, all of those. So this is example of some of the online surveys that we had. We did receive over, received five hundred and eighty respondents and two thousand two hundred individual comments. Holly, the next. And so for some of this, we're very focused on the Main Street project, but I want to take this opportunity to also point out that the downtown development plan's much bigger than just the Main Street project. It actually looked at what is the type of land use that we need or the form, building forms and the facades, what kind of public space and infrastructures needed, what's about mobility and access, looking at public art, opportunity sites, parking management, how are some of this going to be funded, wayfinding and signage? And then it also identified some catalytic projects like the San Juan Festival Street or connecting to the riverfront. And on there is the Main Street redesign. Holly, if you want to go to the next one. As part of the mobility and access, what we heard loud and clear was that we needed to emphasize pedestrian safety on Main and Sixth Street, looking at maybe narrower lanes, vertical elements to slow the traffic down. That was a very strong theme that we heard from a safety perspective, especially from the downtown businesses. We need to complete the pedestrian and bicycle networks that connect the downtown to the Rio Grande. We need to enhance the pedestrian crossings and look at maybe some paving at key pedestrian areas. Holly, the next one. As we were working through this process with the public, there would be examples of a street, of a block of our Main Street, and then people would vote on what they wanted those treatments to be. So they were voting on what they wanted the space to look like, what the planners would look like, if there's outdoor seating, all of those types of things. Holly. It even, when you get down to the seating, they would have kind of the more classic rustic-type look or more urban look. And so we received input on every aspect of the downtown plan. And then what brings us tonight was a big part of it was the Main Street redesign. So this was the old design that had the three lanes heading in one direction. We had the bike lanes on each side, and we had the parked vehicles. Holly. The example shown is if we make it down to two with parking here, eliminating the bike lanes, and then using this eleven feet as what is called programmable space, that could either be for outside dining. Holly. If we wanted to have different games out there. Holly. Just outdoor seating. But then, again, it wasn't just the Main Street. And so I do want to share some of the other projects that are exciting that are included in the downtown plan. So this is San Juan right now, that we do sometimes do the block parties and close it and all of that. It was identified to be a festival street. So Holly, if you want to go to the next one. So we would have removable ballards, we would enhance the lighting and the electrical there. We would also have different landscaping that would all help tie into more of a festive location for our special events. Holly. This is looking up Hunt Avenue towards Cole Park. One of the big parts for the downtown plan is we get thousands of people coming to Cole Park for special events. And how do we connect up there to get those people downtown? So this is looking at Cole Park right now, and Holly. And it's to make it a cultural, or a cultural road, street. So you can see there's different plantings, it's to make it a little bit more narrow, so it's not just a lot, a lot of pavement and enhance the pedestrian experience to make it more likely for people to walk from Cole Park to the downtown. And Holly. The other areas is talking about the alley activations. It's really critical from a downtown perspective related to parking. If you, if you don't have an overabundance of parking, you need to make sure you're getting the most out of the parking you have. And one of the ways to do that is to do alley activation, access the businesses from the alleyway. So this is an example right now of a current alley, and then Holly. And this is an example of if you're accessing the businesses from the back, there could be outdoor seating added, some different treatments and art and those types of things. Another project was to take a look at currently right here where the Main Street would connect to the, the trail system, the Rio Grande, it's just undeveloped. But if we dream and we connect it and with an underpass for, for the pedestrians and connect into a wider trail, riverfront activation. Holly. So all of this dreaming was going on and all of this voting on every single aspect and all of this input was being collected. And it was also being funneled through a traffic engineering company as well as a planning company. And then the last part of it was, okay, we've got all these ideas, but how do we prioritize it? And so this last slide shows what the priority was, and Main Street design improvements was obviously one of the highest priority ones. Holly. So as we think of Main Street, some of the comments that we've heard is two lanes is not enough to handle all of the traffic. And so that's why I wanted to provide this slide. So if you look as traffic is coming in from one sixty over here across the bridge, it's actually one lane of traffic heading each way. When it comes in and circles around Denver, it was three lanes for this stretch right here. So we widen it at the one area we don't want it to move quickly. And then it narrows down to two lanes to continue through the rest of the community. With this change, we've taken away this three blocks, three and a half blocks of, of three lanes to narrow it down to two lanes. But as you can see, and we had to show with traffic counts to C dot, that it can handle, two lanes can handle the flow of traffic. Holly. So from a design and best practices, I think there is a lot of irritation because it feels like it's unsafe. That is, the design is to make it feel as what planners could describe as friction. That is, you need to pay attention because you don't want to hit something, that it feels narrow and that it feels like you need to go slower. What we were seeing a lot of times was people going forty, thirty, those types of speeds, even though it's posted at twenty-five. So the design was to make it feel as if you need to slow down by creating that friction. Now, what is critical to understand is what it may feel like does not mean it's an actual safety issue. This creation of friction is done in a lot of different communities on a lot of different streets. You put boulevards, you narrow the streets, you add parking, you add visuals. That's what designs do to try to slow down traffic. Honestly, if someone's not the most comfortable parallel parking because there's not that third lane, you're going to feel like you might be backing up traffic. And so you may not feel as comfortable parallel parking. Thankfully, we've got a lot of parking lots and side streets that I'll be covering here in a second. But I just, we need to be straightforward, that parallel parking will feel different when there's not a lane that people can easily get into to get around you when you're doing it. From an opening the door perspective, I think there's been this perception that there was safety there with the bike lanes, when in actuality, you're not supposed to open the door into bike lanes or oncoming traffic. And so people should always be looking at oncoming traffic before getting in and out of their vehicles when you're parked on a street. Additionally, from a children, a children perspective, I can tell you as a parent, even when there is bike lanes, they were either getting out of the door that's closest to the sidewalk, or I would watch and tell them when they can get out or not get out. So it's very standard behavior when you're parking on a street. Additionally, when you look at how long this is, so we're talking three and a half blocks, if you drive that at twenty-five miles per hour, it's about forty-eight seconds. So that's what we're talking about from an impact perspective, is forty-eight seconds, less than a minute. If it slows people down and they're driving at fifteen miles per hour, that's about seventy-four seconds. So we've added about half a minute to someone's drive. Now, that does not include if you have to stop for someone to parallel park or the stoplight or if you stop for a pedestrian. Holly. From a safety perspective, I think it's important to know that the lanewits are the exact same at eleven feet as they were before. The standard width of a tractor trailer is eight and a half feet. The parking width used to vary from about six and a half feet to about nine and a half feet. The spaces are now eight and a half feet. The length of the parking spots is about twenty feet. If you look at an extended truck, that is about twenty feet. Now, if there's any extensions or a hitch or anything like that, then obviously they're not going to fit within that parking spot. But thankfully, there's no ticketing, it's, it's not a big deal if you're not parked within that parking spot. We, the reason they're marked is that the more efficient use we have of them, then there, we pick up more parking with that. But obviously, if a vehicle doesn't fit, there's no consequence. They just, they're, they're, they are the size they are. I touched on this, but current law, model traffic code, is people are supposed to park no further than twelve inches from the curb. If someone parks further than that and it creates a side swipe or an accident because they were parked into the lane or further than twelve inches, then they are the ones who will receive a ticket. The other thing that is in the model traffic code is you're not supposed to open your door into oncoming traffic. We have actually in other locations in the city have tickets issued where someone has opened their door into a bike lane and it hit a cyclist, and that person was cited for that. So it is something that's in the current model traffic code. Holly. So from a safety perspective, this design for pedestrians is actually safer. The Federal Highway Administration shows that if you can slow traffic down, that can have a nineteen to forty-seven percent reduction in overall crashes. Obviously depends on how much slower you're making it. But more importantly, it reduces the overall crash severity. So if you look at someone who was traveling forty miles per hour, only one pedestrian is likely out of ten to survive if they get hit in that situation. If you look at a vehicle traveling thirty miles per hour, it does go up. And then if you look at twenty miles per hour, almost nine out of ten individuals would survive that crash. Holly. We also looked at the data related to the calls that we're getting. So this has been in place for thirty So this has been in place for 32 days. Fire response has not provided, responded to anything related to the design. They've had multiple calls related to false alarms at Rainbow's end apartments. And they had one call to crash in front of Big Johnson Pizza Hut, but that's not in this project area. We, for police response, it wasn't until just recently, we've had one accident. So in 32 days, we have only had one accident reported where a mirror, a mirror was hit. It was the vehicle that hit it didn't stay on scene. Um, but we did take the report and we have one report of a mirror being hit. We did get a report of a bicycle vehicle accident near State and Main. We're not sure exactly where, by the time the officers responded, both were gone. So we have no idea of the particulars of that situation and if it was or was not related to the design. So this map is to help in regards to individuals that may not feel safe parking on Main Street because I'm not sure everyone knows how much parking is off of Main Street. So if you look at the side streets, it's still on-street parking, but it's not parallel parking. Um, you also have city dedicated public parking is all of these green shaded areas. And again, you can see why the alley activation is important because it really does help connect them to some of these other stores. We've also gotten questions in regards to an ADA perspective. So we wanted to make sure we are highlighting the ADA. Um, it is actually safer to have the ADA on these side streets next to where the ADA ramps are located so that that can be more easily accessible. We are looking at adding an ADA here in front of Malagros. Um, and we will continue to monitor the usage of ADA on if more need to be added. The bicycle network and then we did have some in our community that did not want the bicycle lanes to be removed. But by and large, through the downtown process, it's what the public wanted. And so these blue lines is the vision for a bike network. Some of the bike lanes are there such as First Street. But then it is to help connect down into the downtown. But these are your east and west corridors as well as long-term trying to find a way to have a dedicated path here along six streets. So the connections are through the side streets to access the downtown. We also have additional projects and improvements that are coming. Um, the wayfinding partnership with the marketing board, we will be ordering the signs this year based on the workload for our street department, though we will not be able to install them until spring of 2022. We also though, at this month, will be getting pedestrian flashing signs, technically called rapid rectangular flashing beacons. But that's where you can push it and it will flash. They're going to be located at Hunt and Sixth, Hunt and Main, San Juan and San Juan and Main. So that ties into the festival street concept and the cultural trail concept as far as where our major pedestrian crossways are. We have been working closely with CDOT. Um, CDOT has been highly engaged even during the downtown plan. They attended some of the meetings, they monitored how that plan was coming together. We had meetings with them, multiple meetings, um, prior to the design of it, the actual design. They reviewed and approved the design and then we've had meetings with them after as well. Some of the things that we've talked to them about as well as having on our radar to, to look at and council's radar as well. Um, for example, the lane striping. Um, we've had to go multiple times to try to address just grinding that off. Didn't remove enough of the reflective nature of those and it, it was a serious situation. Um, we feel like we may have that solution. We're continuing to look at that. We did put the tabs on the correct lanes to help with reflection. And then we've done several treatments of paint to cover up the old lanes. We've talked to CDOT, they said it actually happens on some of their projects and other places too. Other than going back and grinding it some more, they don't really know of any other easy solutions either. So we are still working with them on that one. We have heard also and, and looked at, um, now that we have the bulb outs at the corner, but the stop signs are at the same locations. Um, do people feel comfortable pulling out to be able to see the traffic? And so some of the discussions we're looking at, um, with CDOT is if we want to add signage that says you can pull forward to, to see. We are also going to look at the site distance from a parking perspective to see if maybe we want to make sure that there's not a parked car that could be creating a site distance issue as well. So we are having those discussions with CDOT and greatly appreciate their partnership. And then from a last perspective, um, you know, if, if there's a concern on if this will have a negative impact on our downtown. The convention and visitors barrel has for the last several years employed a software program that can track pedestrian visitors in our downtown. So it doesn't track cars, it's people who are physically on the sidewalks. Um, and what they did is they pulled the same timeframe of August 1st through the 17th of 2021 and they compared that to 2019 and 2018. And we actually have had more people downtown than in those previous years. I am not saying it's because of this project at all. But what I am saying is I don't think you can say this project is hurting the activity we have in the downtown as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brooks. So what we're going to do now, council is we're going to turn it over to the community and we're going to allow, uh, the community members to have their three minutes each. Um, and, and I'll explain to you how that's going to work, everyone. As I mentioned to you earlier, your comments are very important. And it's important not only to, uh, council up here, but it's also important to our city staff as a whole. Uh, whenever we have these comments, we do ask that you remain civil and just talk what's on your mind and just be mindful and respectful along the way. You will have three minutes, um, to give your presentation. And if you're still talking at three minutes when the clock buzzer goes off, I will politely ask you to end at that particular time. Since we have so many people in the audience, we're going to allow the audience people to go first. And then we're going to allow the Zoom people, uh, to make their comments, Ms. Martinez. And then after all the comments are made, uh, we will then just turn it back over to city council and staff for their comments. Okay? So that's the way it's going to go. And, um, I'll start off with the first person. Now, the first person who comes up, the mic is not on right now. So if I can get someone to turn the mic on for, so they'll know how to turn the mic on when they get up there.
And Mayor, I'll do that. I also just wanted to let you know that we had some come in after the cards were submitted. So once you get through the cards, you may still have some in the audience who want to speak.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Brooks. For those of you who didn't get a chance to fill a comment card out, it's okay. We are going to allow everybody who wants to speak an opportunity to speak tonight, okay? All right, so one time run out of cards and we run out of people on the Zoom. We'll open it for the people still haven't filled out cards on Zoom, okay? All right, so the first person we have is Dale Jordan.
Your mic, talk, talk it. Can you remind everybody that if you hear somebody that comes up to the mic covering a topic that they are, that they were asking questions about, if we could just omit that so it's already been covered?
Thank, thank you.
So many people.
Thank you, Councilor Carson, for bringing it up. I appreciate you reminding me of that. Now, some of you may hear someone get up and say some of the things that, uh, you planned on saying. And, and if, if you feel that that person did a good job covering it, after each person finished their little comments, we'll just ask you if you agree with or feel like you feel like that person, just raise your hand. And then you won't have to come up here when I call your name if you don't feel comfortable coming up. We do ask that you don't clap or interrupt other people because we got a lot of people to go through. All that clapping and interrupting is just going to prolong the time and it's disrespectful for those who are at the podium, okay? All right, thank you, Councilor Carson. Okay, go ahead, Dale.
Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, some of the things that I wanted to address, um, having to do with parking in downtown, having narrowed the parking lane to eight and a half feet, which is the standard width of a tractor trailer. Um, what happens if they don't get right up against the curb? Now they're out in the lane of traffic. That eight and a half foot wide trailer is now out in the lane of traffic. With an 11 foot wide lane and an eight and a half foot trailer, that only allows a maximum of 15 inches to each side as your variance. It's pretty dang tight. I understand what the, the goal is, but it, if you've ever pulled a trailer, 15 inches is not a whole lot. And it can get away from you very quickly. Um, in addition to that snow removal, every once in a while, Mother Nature just bombards us with a snowfall that's ridiculous. When CDOT comes through and plows Main Street, they clear the lane of traffic and they don't care where it goes beyond that. And so now you have an abbreviated parking area which is full of snow. Have you made provisions or are you planning provisions for snow removal? Or will Main be closed to downtown parking when it snows? If there's not anywhere to park, what do you do? Um, also with the new curbs that have been installed, it doesn't leave a lot of room for snow to melt and use the drainage system. So we're talking about a potential problem that I think needs to be addressed if it hasn't already. Um, also parking enforcement, I've seen an awful lot of vehicles parked right on that white line to either side of Main Street, right next to the lane of traffic. And they leave far more than the 12 allotted inches. Um, is the police department going to create a position for foot patrol to monitor that, to ticket people to, to get the word out that you need to park in the space as far to the side as you can? So you're not impeding traffic? I've seen a lot of that. In fact, I saw a tractor trailer parked on Main Street right at the end of this, um, this area. And they were parked right in the transition area on the left-hand side of the road, taking up all of the space of that parking area. And in doing so, they were, they were into the transition back to three lanes. So they were effectively impeding traffic. Um, my last point that I want to raise, I don't know if you've thought about emergency vehicles. There are things that happen and we have wonderful emergency services in Alamosa, but an ambulance takes up every bit of that lane. And they're going to stop an entire lane of traffic because they don't have anywhere to go. And that's going to back up traffic. You want to slow it down, put an ambulance in the middle of it. You have a mass casualty incident and we have an ambulance, a fire truck or two or three, several police cars. And now we have a stopped up Main Street. These things need to be addressed. The, the new public space is fantastic, but I think it might've been a little bit generous.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Dale, thank you. And, um, for those of you who make comments, um, staff and council will have comments at the end. Some of you have questions like Dale. Uh, those questions will be addressed, some of those questions will be addressed at the end if staff has that information, okay? So if you wanted to wait until the end to hear the responses to your questions, um, I encourage you to wait throughout the meeting. All right, so by short hands, anyone feel like Dale that have a comment card that you want to raise your hand to see, so we can have a feel of how many people feel the same way? Okay. All right, good, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next person, Ron Quintana.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just had a, a couple of comments. Uh, one of them had to do with snow removal. Uh, if a car is parked overnight or when, when the plows come out, that doesn't give CDOT very much room to move the snow, especially when they're that tight to the travel lane. So when they plow, they're not gonna, they're not gonna hit a car. They're going to pull away from the car and they're going to leave a windrow in the live lane of traffic on that north side. And I don't know what you plan to do on the south side. If you plan to have CDOT pull the snow all the way to the north side or if you want them to pull it both ways. If you pull it to the south side, uh, it's going to make an ice problem because it's shady. We've gone through this before. So the, the, the snow removal, I think is going to be a big problem. Especially if it's a big storm during the day and there's people parking there or if they've left their car there overnight. If they were, uh, smart enough to leave their car at the bar and catch a ride home. Now you've got cars that are parked there and there's no place to put that snow if there's a car there and the windrow will be out in the live lane. Uh, the other comment I had is ju- just like he said, that, uh, play area for the businesses is very generous. It's, and it's probably too late now, one more foot taken out of that, just one more foot would give them so much more, uh, safety. And just, just like you said, uh, it's the driver's responsibility to look behind you. Well, we've all driven Alamosa, we've all driven everywhere else. Sometimes you get in a hurry, sometimes you're not paying attention. Somebody's going to swing the door open and that door, even with 12 inches, they're going to have that door in the live lane. And somebody's coming by and they're not expecting the door to fly open. And that driver that's parked is, you know, just ma- maybe not paying attention or didn't think that they were going to swing out into the live lane of traffic. And, you know, like I say, that one foot would be tremendous. But like I said, it's probably too late now. You all got the curbs built and everything else, but that's my comments, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron, we appreciate it. And, um, once again, just to follow up to let you all know that staff will be making comments in regards to some of these questions about snow removal and things at the end of the presentation. Um, anyone in the audience feel like Ron, they want to raise their hand that may have the same comments? Okay, good, council can see that. Thank you, Ron. Brings us next to, uh, Jeff Myers. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, thank you very much, sir. Okay, Diana Allen?
I drove trucks for almost 20 years. The truck width is limited to eight foot, eight and a half feet. That doesn't count the mirrors. The, the mirrors on my truck were a minimum of 10 feet from one to the other. But those are more than six foot above the ground and it doesn't pose a hazard. But now most full-size trucks, most full-size pickups have extendable mirrors. And the people that pull trailers with them, most of them leave the mirrors out all the time. I have a 20-foot cargo trailer that I pull with a Tahoe. With the mirrors that came on that Tahoe, I could only see about six foot down either side of my trailer. So I mounted a set of West Coast mirrors, just like you see on a semi on my Tahoe. They're 10 foot six. When your lanes were three foot, when you had three lanes down there with the bicycle lane, it was not a problem. But since you've narrowed it to two lanes with parking on both sides and most people won't get right up to the curb, the only way I can safely drive down that street is to take my half out of the middle. And that irritates the ones behind me. I've had, I've had them, uh, I come through there once in a while in the morning and I've had them, because there's nobody parked, they'll go around me on the, on the right-hand side through the parking area because there's nobody parked there at that hour. But, uh, at three lanes with bicycle lanes, yeah, I had a safety margin. I no longer have that safety margin with, when they took the bicycle lanes out and moved the parking out. Because if those people are not upright close to the curb and they have those extended mirrors out, we will hit mirrors. So that, that is part of the problem. The other part of the problem is by removing that bicycle lane, I don't care whether it's illegal or not. Many people are so used to getting out on the right side of their car that on a one-way street, they don't think it, they don't think about it, they go ahead and get out. The bicycle lane at least gave them a little safety area. True, it's illegal, but it gave them a little safety area. Now, without that bicycle lane, they're opening it into traffic and most people getting out don't pay that much attention. Thank you and have a nice week.
Thank you so very much. Thank you for your comments. How many people in the audience have similar comments? Um, so just raise your hand so we can have an idea, okay? All right, good, thank you. Okay, that brings us to Philip. That's all we have is Philip. Okay, Philip?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I don't live here. Um, I own a business here. I used to own Mood Salon Spa and I was on the other side of the traffic, it was going, uh, um, eastbound. I don't own that salon anymore, so now I'm on Main Street, which is going westbound. Um, and my, I'm a hairdresser, so I have a chair right next to the window. So I see all the action that's happening on Main Street. Um, so this is what I observed so far with this new, this new plan that you guys have for Main Street. Uh, I don't, I didn't see any handicap access or handicap parkings are on Main Street right now. Um, that's one of my issues right there. Um, the outdoor dining, it's nice. The outdoor dining, it's nice. It's nice. It's it looks really nice, but it's not. I've entertained myself there before. It's very noisy. If you like smelling exhaust while you're eating, you might as well eat outside there. I we witnessed, me and a colleague of mine have witnessed near close to accidents happening with semis with people opening their doors. And they had to swerve over to the next lane, almost hit the other car. So we we witnessed that stuff. We also I've also witnessed ambulances and emergency vehicles trying to get through. And it's it's there's so much congestion there that it's hard for them to get through Main Street. I don't know if they consider alternate routes, but it's just for emergency vehicles, it's not a good idea. I've also witnessed a semi, this gentleman spoke earlier about review mirrors. I witnessed a semi take out a side review, excuse me, a side mirror on a vehicle. Though it wasn't really his fault because it's so narrow, the side mirror of the vehicle, he took it out with his back tire. I don't know if there was more extent damage from that, but I only seen a side mirror fall on the street. Let's see, another thing is, I believe, Main Street, just observing, it's a major highway. I don't know if you consider that too. It's a really major highway. You see a lot of semi vehicles. You see a lot of tourists coming with their campers, RVs, stuff like that. It gets really, really congested there on Main Street. If you were to actually just go out there and witness it and stay out there for a day or just come and hang out with me for the day, I'll do your hair. Yeah, and come and see all the traffic and you'll see the congestion that's happening there. And it's not safe for people to get out of their vehicles. I waited this morning. I came to work. I waited five minutes to get out of my vehicle. There was so much congestion there. I also entertain the idea of going through the passenger side and dukes of hazering it out to my passenger side. But, you know, that takes a lot of effort for me to get over to my passenger side to do that. So that's that's those are my comments and I hope you guys can actually figure out. I can suggest something out thirty seconds left, but maybe just take out all the parking and just have everybody park on those other parking areas. Just take out all the parking completely and that would solve the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Philip. Okay, and if we can get a show of hands of how many people may have similar comments as Philip? Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. Jay Sputh?
Thank you, sir. As everybody else has talked about, have the same issue. The design of the street probably wasn't the problem. It's a human aspect that is a huge problem. People don't park. They don't have any respect. I've had to stop, try to wait for traffic to scoot over as I drive by in my truck, about tear mirrors off. This is horrid. I also haul machinery, trying to get through town now with hauling tractors and stuff, sixteen feet wide. What are we gonna do about our wide loads come through? Some of them are up to twenty feet wide. This thing is a mess. It is just absolutely awful. And the only thing I can see happening now is there's been enough outreach, enough people have spoken about this, enough articles in the newspaper that you're getting the case built. So it's not a matter of if somebody gets hurt, it's a matter of when. And when they do, there will be a lawyer waiting to take this over because there's been already established that there's an issue with Main Street. And I'm sure there will be somebody happy to take on a case, whether it's against an engineer or something. I've called and complained to CDOT and city council. I know there are numerous problems with this. I've driven almost five million miles and the first time I come down Main Street the other day, I absolutely had a panic attack. It was awful. Truck about hit my mirrors, vehicles, they won't scoot over. You can't get towards everybody's crowd in the middle of the lane to try to get by all of the cars. And it is, it's not pretty. I don't imagine any of you drive a truck, hop in one and drive it down Main Street. Drive a bus, drive your camper down Main Street beside somebody and you'll see what I'm talking about. And like I said, at least when the three lanes were there, it snowed. CDOT had a place to put the snow to have removal so it would still flow traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jase. Thank you. Okay. Other people in the audience have similar comments as Jase, if you could, just raise your hand, all right? Good, thank you. George Wilkinson.
I had some concerns about safety, ADA and bicycles. You addressed some of this. But, you know, somebody with a handicap or whatever, you want them to park around the block or down two, three blocks and then try to make it back to where they need to go. You know, it's totally impossible. And talking about wide loads, I I met some combines today that are coming through town. These truckers have set a GPS for a certain location. They bring you right down Main Street. And when they get there, they got a mess. It's been a cluster ever since you put this in. And I I think that it needs to be addressed with either something to get rid of the the parked cars along the side of it or you get two trucks coming down through there, it's almost impossible. If they had to move over, they've taken out the other one. Somebody's gonna get a ticket and it ain't gonna be, probably the person getting out of the car is gonna be the one that hit them. And it's just a matter of time before there's a serious accident down through there. Emergency vehicles, snow plows, a plow coming down the road with a wing and a and a plow on it is probably thirteen feet wide. So that takes up excess of what lane one one lane is and the other ones, you know, maybe somebody stopped in it or whatever. Somebody goes to park a car and traffic's lined up toward the ridge. And so, you know, I think it needs to be addressed and most of the things have been covered so far. But from what I can see, one sixty is a state highway. And in the state of Colorado, it's number one for accidents. And so we ain't gonna help with anybody congestion, the traffic can cause an accident. You put up a stop sign, somebody's gonna have a wreck and that's just what you got right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George. Okay, if we could, once again, by show of hands, anyone in the audience have similar comments that George, okay, has? All right, thank you. Louis Galagels?
Thank you for having me. I'm a business owner on Main Street. I sell medical equipment, a lot to a lot of elderly. One of my concerns is it is the parking and for their safety. Getting out of their vehicle, they're, you know, if they're in a walker or stuff, and especially if they're out where the main traffic is, it gets really dangerous for them. I would like to see at least a foot on each side for more parking. I think that, I know some of the barriers are already in there, but I think now is probably a good, the best time to, if we're gonna change it, we should change it now instead of wait for later. And then also ADA parking, I'd like to see more. I know one's not gonna get put in front of my store, but I think we should have more than just by Malagros, at least on the other side of State Street, maybe by the bookstore. Just more access for people that with disabilities to be able to help them. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Louis. By short hands, how many may have some of the comments that Louis added to the conversation? Okay, thank you. Larry Jack?
Counsel, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I do work for CDOT, but my comments have nothing to do with CDOT. These are my comments. I do drive a snow plow. I've plowed Main Street for twenty-three and a half years now. I see a mess coming. It's gonna happen. The the snow removal right now, what we are responsible for are the driving lanes. You are responsible for the parking. So I'm out of that. But I am concerned. I'm concerned for our citizens. And what we have is a mess. When you have curbs and and barricades in place, how are you gonna remove the snow? I guess that's a question that I have. You know, yes, I drive a truck also for CDOT and we haul equipment down through town. I've seen, I've been part of this. It's it's too narrow, guys. Am I totally against what's going on downtown? Absolutely not. I'm all for bringing business to downtown Alamosa and bringing it back to life. But we need to, we need the the areas that you've set aside for for pedestrians and for people and eating. It's too generous, guys. It's way too generous. I've heard some people say a foot, a foot and a half. Those need taken in three feet on each side for safety reasons. And it can be done. And from what I've seen, nothing is really set completely right now. This can be done. This could be done in a half a day. The changes that need made could be done in a half a day. And I I just really encourage you guys, you know, i- if you haven't spent time downtown looking at this, go do it. Go sit downtown for a while. I, you know, we frequent the Purple Pig on Friday nights. We have dinner there. A group of us meet there and visit. It's amazing what you'll see. Guys, yeah, it's it's a right now it's a mess, but it can be fixed by you people. It can be fixed. Give them three feet on each side and you'll see a difference. I think it needs more than a foot on each side. And I think you'll make a lot of people a lot happier and you will bring safety into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And if we can get a show of hands of how many people may have similar comments, is Larry? Okay, thank you. We have Leroy and Ms. Rosa Lee Martinez.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Linda, is there something to say about this? Excuse me. Rosie's gonna upset up, be upset with me because I probably have to tell you how old we are. But we've been in business over fifty years in Alamosa, in the city of Alamosa, and we've got growing pains in some of our businesses. But we didn't continue to just ram them down your people's throat. Just like our salvage yard, we're extended to the max. The only place we can go is straight up. And that's guess what you're gonna have to do here with the city is go either underground or go up a pile because you've got a bottleneck right now. And I mean, it's a serious one because our weather here is not like it is in most places. Our weather here gets down to thirty, forty below. What are you gonna do then? I think Jack's a hundred percent correct there and and to just drive any kind of a trailer. There's trailers and concrete trucks going through here every day. Everybody goes through the auction, so we use trailers and and vehicles. And as far as parking, you can't police everybody that drives a vehicle. Some of them, my wife, she can't back up. She's gotta be able to drive. She's gotta be able to drive in a straight line going forward. That's just the way it is, but not everybody's a perfect driver. And before you make a big error, right now, let's just admit that we've made a mistake and let's correct it now because it's easy to fix. Just put it back like it was and you'll be all right. So I have to say.
Okay, now it's my turn. I have a minute, twenty-two seconds. And and I do have problems driving. That's that's a fact. A lot of us do. And as as I came into Main Street the other night and I was just panicky. It's it's like your your cars are like this. And if you have any kind of a perception problem at all, I'm like whoever said, I was in the middle of the lane because I wanted to make sure that I didn't hit anything. And so when you're in the middle of the lane, you're impeding traffic. But I find it very difficult to drive that part of the road. It is not easy. And he's right. I cannot parallel park.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both very much. Don Thompson. Oh, once again, by a short hands, thank you, counsel, for reminding me. How many of you have similar comments as the Martinez's? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Coleman, council, city staff and audience. I've bicycled almost daily for the fifty-plus years that I've lived here in Colorado. And because I am a bicyclist, I always had a strong concern about transportation issues. And of course noted, with interest, the changes made in many localities during the pandemic to transportation, such as closing streets to motor vehicles, expanding pedestrian bicycling facilities and so forth. And most of these changes, you'll note, have been retained because of the public support and the improvements which they've made to the quality of life for the citizens. Alamosa, as was explained to you, had a number of public meetings, most of which I attended prior to making any changes. And except for leaving out bicycle access, did what I consider a commendable job of improving the highway which goes through our business district. Lack of bicycle access can still be implemented in the future. Hope it will be and I will continue to work with Public Works Department and hope seeing those changes made. And people talking about the snow, as a bicyclist, I know where the snow goes, right in the bike lane. And I bicycled all winter. While the travel lanes have shifted, they remain the same width as they had been when there were three lanes. Motors who want to exit their vehicles need to look in the mirror as a bicyclist. This is one of the major threats to bicyclists, being doored by the motorist who opens their door without looking. Now on Main Street, they're only a threat to themselves, so. And the consultants, of course, who worked on this, showed the number of city parking lots that we have. Pretty safe getting out of your vehicle there and the number of stores which have rear exits. And hopefully that will be improved, more rear exits, a little more attractive alleys. As a board member of the Narrow Gage Bookstore Co-op, I'm concerned about pedestrian traffic in the business district. As a member of the Alamosa Historic Preservation Advisory Committee for over ten years, I'm aware of how an appealing business district increases tourism. And as a volunteer at the Colorado Welcome Center for the past ten-plus years, I'm aware of how tourists react to changes on Main Street and so far I've had positive comments. Older folks like me often have difficulty in adapting to change. Without our, with our worsening climate crisis, extreme changes will need to be made. I don't see that the public is very capable at accepting change. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And if we can see by short hands, how many of you may have similar comments as Don? Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. And you all are doing very good. I just want to commend you. This is a good audience, so thank you. Keep it up. All right, Judith Gray.
Thank you all for the willingness that you have to serve. I have a couple of comments. One is that I understand that the whole objective for all of this is to increase tourism and to get people to come downtown to buy things. I would like to see, okay, you've already eliminated half your tourists with a one-way street. You've only, half the people, if they're tourists, don't even see downtown. I would like to see Main Street and Sixth Street go back to two-way traffic. Make Sixth Street a truck route so that the trucks and the RVs and the people with campers and the people that are simply commuting through Alamosa because they don't work, they're not working downtown, they're trying to get from here to Montevista or La Jara or the other way around, that they don't have to go through downtown. So that it eliminates the the truck traffic, which is, as many have said, is just really unsafe, I think, and and nerve-wracking to be downtown and to see on the trucks, the truck traffic down Main Street. Why not have an alternative route? Well, we've got another road right next to it. That's one thing. That's my biggest thing, is to go back to two-way streets. The other thing is that several years ago, I talked to a general contractor. And he said, he has worked with a lot of people that have beautiful blueprints. They are gorgeous. It looks great on paper. But he said, when you go to implement it, they are either not buildable or not feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Okay, by short hands, if we can have amount of people. amount of people who agree with Judith. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Can I have the Kleenex, please? Counselor Carson? Oh. I apologize.
Please pass the tissue. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, up next, Jim Rea. Realy, I'm sorry, Jim Realy. Thank you, Jim.
Morning. I'm in strong support of what you guys have done. And it looks to me like as you develop the alleys, it will leave some, alleviate some of these problems. So I hope that you will continue to do what you're doing. I like the idea. I am really pleased with the increase in the parking. I hope it adds to what you guys get to do downtown. One of the things that I feel, and I believe if you look, if you're going from South Fork to somewhere southwest or southeast, I'm sorry. Or if you're coming from southeast, going northwest, Google Maps will take you down through the Capulean Highway and up the county line, completely bypassing Alamosa. There's an awful lot of people that use that service as their guide to get someplace. And so everything that we can do to improve people coming through here is a good thing. I think it's really nice that this is the most contentious problem this community may have. That speaks well for us. I would like to see a lot more courtesy in our driving, in our parking, in the way we treat each other. And I think that would alleviate a lot of the problems that I hear. If you've got two big trucks traveling down Main Street, they can both cheat over and take their half out of the middle. That's courtesy. That makes sense. Looking in your rearview mirror, looking out the backside is only courtesy. It's your responsibility to do that before you enter traffic. I think I have more of an issue getting into traffic if it's a diagonal parking because a lot of times I'm eclipsed, especially if I'm driving my car, by something that's taller and higher. And it's more dangerous for me, I feel like it's more dangerous, to back out into traffic without being able to see very far. One of the tricks that I've used, and you can use it entering Main Street from the north, doesn't work so well from the south, is to look across the street and look in the reflection of the, um, display. You can see what's coming if you'll just take time to think about it and watch. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Jim. Appreciate that. Okay? And if we can get a show of hands of how many you agree with Jim? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay? That brings us to Ned Harario.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate your time, your efforts. I own a business down Main Street. I own All Valley Cafe. It's a, it's a breakfast place. A lot of elderly people go to my restaurant. Uh, I, my biggest concern right now is seeing the elderly people getting out of their vehicles. I've seen them try to climb over the top of that new curb that you guys have. It's very dangerous. Uh, I don't know if you guys know Walt Paulson? He was a big-time player in the community for a long time. He's about eighty-seven years old, walks with two canes. The man can barely walk as it is. And for him to go through an obstacle course to get to my restaurant seems unfair to that man. You know, I just wish there was something better for the elderly people. There was another man I saw actually trying to get out of the back of his vehicle, and he just stood there, stumped, not knowing how to get out of his vehicle to get over that curb, that little piece. And, you know, the waitress goes back there and tells me, hey, why, why don't you go help that man? I said, man, I, I, I'm cooking orders here. I can't help every person that walks up to the, to the thing. I wish I could. You know, but I can't. And by the way, I was the one that reported the mirror breaking on Main Street. I was the one that actually saw what happened. I was getting down groceries from my restaurant, walking towards my restaurant. And I see a truck with a fifth-wheel camper driving by. This truck that parked on the side of the road is a full-size vehicle, like the people were talking about with the extended mirrors. Fifth wheel hits it, decapitates the mirror, like rips it, and you could hear the smack really hard. The only thing I could think about is a person like Walt getting smacked like that. Or another human being getting smacked like that. Who's gonna be responsible for that human being? Is it gonna be us? The business owner that has to be, take care of his people? Or is it gonna be the city that came up with the great idea? It's a great idea. I like it. Improve Main Street, improve downtown. But think of every class of person. I saw how you were talking about children. How about the elderly? They go to my business. I, I, I need that business. You know, if anything, we could have used more parking. Why didn't you go diagonal parking there for me? Do something different for me. I, I, I can use more business. And I'm sure there's a lot of business owners here that say the same thing. You know, and, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. Thanks for trying to look out for us. I thank you. Thank you for the three minutes you gave me. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ned. And if we could get a show of hands of how many you feel like Ned? All right. Okay. Good. Thank you. Say Carrie Korsman? There you go, Carrie.
Anyway, I want to thank you for trying to improve downtown Alamosa. I think you guys have done some wonderful things for our community. I really appreciate it. Being a teacher, sometimes I make great plans. I love the statistics. I love the work and the research that you've done into this. And I really appreciate all that. However, sometimes being a teacher, the plans didn't work. And as you can hear, the community's not feeling safe. Talking to a lot of my friends and family, I have another thought that's different. Um, where it comes in as one lane, continue as one lane, but give us a bit, give us some room. Give us some space. We need to get down Main Street, and we're not feeling safe. We see people over the white line. You've heard all those statements. We, I can't get out of my car. I have to be careful with my grandkids. There's, I don't feel safe downstairs, downtown anymore. And my thought is, comes across the bridge as one lane, just continue it until we get past the area that you're looking at. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Carrie. And if we can get a show of hands of how many people may feel like Carrie feeling right now? Okay? All right, good, good. All right, so, so I ran out of comment cards, but that's not the end of this meeting. So what we're going to do, um, I noticed we have over seventy-six people on Zoom, but I don't think it's fair for the people who drove here to wait until all of the Zoom people talk. We're gonna go ahead and allow the rest of the people who are in the audience who would like to make a comment to just start a line right there at the door, if you would like to come up and make a comment. Um, and then we'll allow you your opportunity because not everyone had an opportunity to get their comment cards, okay? If you can start, um, right there behind the door, and I'll make sure that each one of you gets your opportunity to speak. Okay? If you could, since I don't have a comment card when you get to the podium, if you would state your name, uh, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay? Go ahead, Ms. Azrael.
Hello, my name is Azrael Madrigal Chase. I am a homeowner in Alamosa. I moved here ten years ago. I spend money here. I pay taxes here, and I eat, I shop downtown. I just want to commend City Council for taking great steps to improve our business district. Like I said, I've lived here for ten years. When I got here, Alamosa was kind of a ghost town. It wasn't a place where people were, were walking. It wasn't a place where people were dining outside. And it's great to have seen that change in the past two to three years. And I do understand that COVID kind of sped up that plan with the parklets, but it truly has brought a new atmosphere to downtown. That being said, of course, I understand nothing's perfect. And yes, there, um, I just want to, I guess one of the main reasons I wanted to come here tonight was that I, I, I want to just commend that there was no malicious intent in making our downtown unsafe. And that there was a great amount of research and outreach done to come up with this plan. I, in some of those outreach meetings where we met at the Nessie Toll House and put dots on what designs were preferred, I attended some of those meetings. And I myself, I know there were several options presented with the final one being the winning one. I can't tell you which one were my top two. Because that happened a long time ago, and then COVID happened. So I just, I, I feel like there's a lot of feelings that this was like a city thing and a city dream. When I say city thing, I mean like staff or, um, our elected officials. But I just want to commend that there was a fair amount of outreach done that I had the pleasure to participate in. And that's not to demean any of the safety concerns that some community members may be feeling, but it's still great to see a lively downtown and a great thriving business district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And if we can get a show of hands of how many you may feel like Azrael, if you could. All right, okay. Good, good. Thank you. All right, good to see you.
Hi, thank you for this time to speak. Um, three things. Um, I came in, I was gone for, for a birthday celebration. I came in last week. And, um, I had to pick up some books at Narrow Gauge. And I had come, I came back to the vehicle I had to get into. And, uh, the eight-and-a-half-feet span is not enough because I was parked all the way in to make sure that there is no, um, conflict with me opening the door to get out on the left-hand side, which is the driver's side. And when you have eight, eight-and-a-half feet side by side by side, or even three, three, uh, noodles, right, side by side by side, it doesn't allow extra time, extra space for anything else that could come up unexpectedly. And so I was trying to get into my vehicle, and the, the lights just happened to change. And there was a vehicle that was pulling a trailer behind them. It was just a regular pickup, no wide mirrors, but it had a wide trailer that it was pulling with extra machinery on it. And if I had not noticed that the lights had changed, I would have been hit for sure because, um, I was able to turn around in, in time to, um, get flush against my vehicle while the truck, uh, drove by. And that, um, piece of, of engine or whatever it was that was in the trailer was this close to my face, and it scared me. And that's why I think the lanes need to be wider than that. I don't know exactly how many years ago, but we did vote because of the, the problems with, uh, semis coming through, coming in through Main Street. We voted to have a one-way on Main Street going, uh, westward and Sixth Street going eastward so that we could make allowances for the, for the wide semi-trailers and, and so on. Our, our far, our semis that carry alfalfa and whatever else, and even for the trailers, the RVs that come in, our tourists, we needed that space. And that's why we, we voted for a wide, wider lanes and more than just two lanes. And, uh, it, it does make a difference in terms, in terms of safety. When you have a bottleneck, chances are that you go into a bottleneck, it's just like a balloon. Once, once you're, you're, you're narrowed down, everybody's trying to get through because they have places to go. And then you get to the end, this is gonna be something that's gonna come up at the end, after we get all these things changed. It, it explodes. You know, anything that's, that's forced to, to crunch together.
Okay. We're gonna have to ask you the end, but thank you.
It explodes.
Thank you for your.
Wanted to let you know, it is dangerous.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. How many of you feel the same way? If you don't mind, just raise your hand. Okay? All right, thank you. Okay?
And for the record, because I read my letter today, um, and I'm not within three minutes. And so, uh, Birdie Smith has given me her three minutes, so I have a little bit extra time. Here's, here's.
It doesn't work that way.
Here's the petitions.
So we just want to be fair to let you know that you have three minutes, and that three minutes I would politely ask you in your conversation at that time.
Oh, wow, did you hear that? Okay, guys, here's, here's the petition. Petitions that have been signed by many, many people, and I didn't even have time to collect them. So I'm gonna read really fast. That's, "Thank you for listening to us. When I first contemplated writing my weekly column about the downtown plan, I actually had decided to back off, be nice, and write something like, 'Only time will tell, and let's wait and see.'" "I was also going to add that I hope I was still alive when they did something on the south side of Alamosa. That's, that's how I roll." "However, the very first evening I pulled onto Main from San Juan, before everything was even in place, I could not believe how dangerous this plan was. I ran an errand, then drove back around Main Street, turned around a few blocks and drove by again, and I was in disbelief that this was a plan." "I think most of us here understand that you had many meetings discussing this plan. I think I attended most of them." "Um, I agree with some people that said it looked good on paper." "To me personally, I don't care if you had a hundred meetings. In my humble opinion, this design is dangerous, unsafe, and someone will get hurt. It is so obvious." "It's not a matter of if, it's when." "Um, and speaking of meetings, you remember when I attended a meeting at the Rec Center for Your Budget? I was the only person there." "And maybe the city should wonder, why aren't people coming to meetings? Where's the apathy?" "Uh, do folks believe that you are going to do what you want to regardless of public opinion?" "It has been said that progress is uncomfortable, that we, all of us who hate the design, don't want to change." "Uncomfortable to me is when I eat too much turkey at Thanksgiving and I have to unsnap my pants." "If this change in the downtown traffic prob, or pattern is progress, then I guess I don't like it." "I am requesting a few simple things. I want folks to be able to get out of their car comfortably and not worry about their doors being ripped off or their mirrors or stepping over curbs. I want parents to feel safe when getting their children out of their vehicles on either side. I want handicapped and older people to get out on Main comfortably, if that is what they need or want to do. I would like to issue a wheelchair walker challenge to all of you, and I would like to continue it through the winter when there's no snow removal. Making cars and trucks and trailers and buses travel through three to four blocks as close as they can is ludicrous." "Um, I've heard many horror stories. I was gonna talk about Christine. Hers is just one of hundreds and, uh..." Wow.
Thank you.
Wow.
Okay. All right. By a show of hands, if we could see how many people may have similar comments. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so, um, next.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Richard Hubler. I'm recently relocated back to Alamosa. I lived here a number of years ago. Um, I am a planner, so I understand, uh, the process that you've gone through to do this. Ms. Brooks did an excellent job of outlining that. Unfortunately, this is oftentimes what happens when we initiate new change, is that the folks that weren't able or didn't get a chance to get their voice during that process come after something happens because it matters more. And that's not to say that anybody's comments aren't valid. They're totally valid. But you guys have a different, a difficult challenge to balance the technical needs, things like parking width. The city code requires a parallel parking space to be eight feet wide. That requires an angled parking space to be nine feet wide. Eight-and-a-half feet that's selected here is in the middle of that and is adequate in that regard. You've got technical issues like snow removal. You've also got a ton of cultural issues that you have to deal with, and that's where you're at now. So I simply want to say that I do support this. Road diets are always a challenge. Transportation upgrades are always a challenge. If you want to get a lot of folks annoyed by what you did with the road, put in a roundabout. Um, but, you know, those things have been proven over time to enhance safety. They are a little bit more difficult. They do make people feel a little bit less comfortable, and that, like Heather said, is part of the point. It causes people to slow down and pay more attention. This is a state highway that goes through here, but that doesn't need, it needs to be a freeway. The Federal Highway Administration, uh, the folks responsible for interstates have been pushing road diets since 2014. I think that says a lot and they do it because of the safety impacts. So I do think this is a positive change for the community. I'm excited to see it. When I noticed it when I got here, I was like, oh, this is great. I didn't manage to get a road diet in the last, through in the community. I was last in, so I was happy to see it happen here. I hope you guys stay the course. And, you know, this is the first of several steps. Let the rest of those play out and then see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And by short hands, how many of you may have similar comments? Alright, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, um, I, I do wanna say that Alamosa has a ton of potential, but we need to go about this in a, in a safe way. Um, I did witness an elderly person carrying oxygen behind them, trying to get into their vehicle. And I stopped my car, so they were able to get into their driver's seat, so. And also I know you guys want to make it to where people visit shops and stores and bring business to Alamosa, but that's not the way to do it, just because when you're driving through Main Street, you're holding your breath and you're just trying to get through as quick as possible and as safely as possible. You don't have time to look at the, the shops or what we have to offer and that's how visitors are gonna see it too. So I just want you to keep it in mind, safety and, and as a whole, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. How many of you have similar comments? Alright, okay, thank you. Okay? And when you come up to the podium, we ask everyone to state your name as well, okay? We just keep in notes.
Donnie Batista, thanks counselors for hearing, not really so much a comment, but more of a question that I haven't had, um, asked or talked about as of yet. But is there a plan to, I guess, take a look at what's gonna happen to residential traffic with slowing down the traffic down Main Street? Um, I know First Street just reopened after being, you know, repaved. And I don't live on First Street, but I do drive it regularly. And the traffic on that street is unbelievable right now. Um, it's really fast, you know, most people are driving forty miles an hour down First Street now. And I know that was a great running, um, road for not only, um, just casual runners, but also for the college and the schools. Um, and several cyclists use that as well. And so I was just curious to know if you guys have thought about or are gonna think about what's gonna happen to residential traffic with slowing down the Main Street traffic. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And once again, uh, those questions that you bring up, we will not just go back and forth answering question at this time, but at the end of the presentation, we'll turn everything back over to staff so, so that they can comment on those questions, okay? For the sake of time, we're gonna keep it going. Um, and then those questions will be addressed at the end of the meeting. Okay?
Hi, my name's Carolina Rodriguez and I work in a building downtown. And, um, I am fortunate enough to have a window seat. And so I often get to see things that, like I just echo what a lot of people have said. Um, elderly, like trying to not trip over that curb, um, struggling to get to where they're supposed to be at. And then I also have enjoyed, like, the cool features of getting to eat a meal outside. But in several occasions where I've been eating my meal outside, it's almost kind of like a little rush because of high traffic during lunch and i- I don't feel exactly safe eating out in one of those tables. And even though the little, like, cube thing could serve as protection, like, it's still kinda scary to sit out there and eat. Cause if there was an accident, there'd be like, I don't know if things would fly my way or anything. But, um, so I, I get the intent and intention was good and I think it's a, um, good idea, but it didn't work out as safely as we thought it would. So, um, that's just my concern on the safety is like the main thing, cause I get to hear like cars honking all the time. Also, um, it is only two blocks. So, and the sign that says like that there's gonna be another lane added or like that lanes merge, it's like right where they merge. And so it's not really like a heads up, it's more like immediately right now. And then also when they go back to three lanes for like one block and then the other lane has to merge back on, um, by Walgreens, I think, they won't actually turn. Sometimes they just go or they like try to like push you off your lane to get in. And it's just because it's so short, so there's another safety thing. And then, um, I don't know if anyone from like the restaurants that are located, cause I think this was to help businesses and help, uh, like their consumer growth or, um, but the, there's like three of my favorite restaurants that don't really have the nice little eating out area. And I get that they're really up the front, but I'm like, that kinda leaves some businesses out and on top of the unsafety. And I think, I think that's it and thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if we can get a, a short hands, you may have similar comments, okay? Thank you. Thank you all. Good.
How y'all doing?
Good, thank you.
Uh, councilor. My name is Noel Thompson and I am a business owner, somewhat in the trucking business. And I got a lot of trucks. And I have instructed, all my drivers to avoid Main Street because I don't wanna losses, just because it's so tight. Um, I'm here to kinda point the finger. Because we got people who making upwards to a hundred and twenty thousand making a lot of these rules. Ned, I was, this is Ms. Brooks there, who get paid all this money to manage the city when the mayor only make seven thousand. Councilor Hall will make nothing for doing their job, which is not, to me is not right. Um, my biggest problem as being in Alamosa for the last eight years is that I understand you're trying to improve downtown. You want people to come. But that's not safe. That's not safe for the community. I don't feel safe even driving my own per- person car downtown anymore. Um, and for that, for, for the city council to let that happen, I don't know what y'all were thinking. I mean, I'm just, I mean, I mean, to have a city manager or whoever, like I said, I'm here to point fingers because we pay a lot of taxes, you know? And, I mean, I don't know if y'all was blinded, but, I mean, her presentation that she did, um, it looked good until you drive down through there. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just so afraid that if somebody get killed, the city gonna get sued. If I send a semi down that road, I'm gonna be sued, you know? It, it just need to, I mean, we need to fix it quick before something happen. And that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, how many of you, uh, have similar comments? Okay, by short hands, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, city councilor. Uh, my name is Darryl Cooper. Uh, just a few comments. Um, we do know that the lanes are eleven and a half feet. They have to be. That's, that's a, a federal highway, not a, not just a state highway. I think some of the differences though, if we're out driving US one sixty after you get out of town aways, there's a shoulder on each side. We don't have that shoulder through town. To, uh, do this design on a, on a federal highway as contrasted to downtown Santa Fe, that's very pedestrian friendly. A federal highway does not run through downtown Santa Fe. If you've ever been to downtown Grand Junction, very similar to the design of our downtown. Uh, outside dining, lots of trees, little shops and very pedestrian friend- friendly. A US highway does not run through that. Um, there are other towns, you know, uh, downtown Durango is away from both, uh, State Highway five fifty and US Highway one sixty, which, uh, intercept just outside Durango. And so there are many places where a design like this is very conducive to the downtown of those, of those various cities. I think the difference here is we have a US highway running through it. And with that, I, you know, probably some things need addressed because of that. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. How many of you have similar comments? Okay, thank you. Alright. Anyone else in the audience would like to make comments before we go to the Zoom audience? Because once we leave this audience, I will go to Zoom and I won't come back. So, um, if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to make some comments, please come up to the podium right now. Thank you.
Thanks for giving me the time to, um, voice my concerns.
Welcome.
This is a dangerous, upsetting thing that you did downtown. It's a mistake. You need to admit you made a mistake and fix it. I've run, been running a business for a long time here. We mess something up, we fix it. This is a mess, wait till the lawsuits start coming. Just wait and see. You made a mistake, you need to fix it. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Okay. By short hands, how many of you may feel like him? Okay, thank you. Alright, please come up to the podium. Yes.
I wasn't going to say anything. I'm Vella Owens. But I, I just really think you guys, I mean, I appreciate what you do in downtown. And I know our business has always been west of town and everything, but we've supported downtown. And it's beautiful what the concept was intending to be. But I'm really concerned about the snow removal and the ice. I mean, every year I come downtown and try to get into a store and I skate all my way up the curb and you've got two curbs. And I really think you've gotta get that one curb out of the way. I can't imagine what kinda mess you're gonna have this one. I mean, we have wide open space out there that we get snow off of, but it's, it's nothing like you guys got here with this closed quarters and everything. And it really needs to be addressed before it gets here. We had a good snow in October last year, I remember.
Hey, thank you, thank you very much. And how many of you feel the similar comments that way? Okay? Alright, thank you. Okay? Anyone else, if you're planning on speaking and you're in the audience, I ask that you come up to the podium right now. We'll, we'll have, um, give you one more last chance. So if anyone, any comments? Okay, going once, gonna go three times and then we're gonna go to Zoom and we're not coming back. Going twice. Okay, three times. Thank you all so much for your comments. So what's gonna happen next is we're gonna go to Zoom. We have currently seventy-two people on Zoom, but only three of them have their hands raised at this moment. You all will be able to hear their comments as, well, Ms. Martinez, if you can give the people in Zoom, uh, uh, the, um, way to raise their hands so we can recognize them. And then once we finish going through all of the people who have comments on Zoom, we would then bring it back to our city manager and our city attorney for their comments and then we'll bring it back to council for further comments, okay? Alright, go ahead. Uh, Ms. Martinez, if you can please show those people how to, uh, raise their hands so we can invite them in.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you wanna speak on this, uh, go ahead and use the raise your hand feature on the Zoom app. If you are on a telephone, you'll dial star nine to use that raise your hand feature. And then we'll call your name as your hand is raised in that order.
So, it looks like we have a total of seventy-two attendees, but only seven people have their hands raised at this moment. So we're gonna go ahead and first, uh, Ms. Martinez, what I would like to do is recognize them in the order from the top to the bottom. Uh, I think that way may be the easiest way. If you lower your hand, you will be moved to the bottom of the line, so I encourage you to keep your hand raised until we call you. If not, you're gonna go into a different order, okay? So the first person is Lori Sharp.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, if, we're gonna go ahead and start the, uh, clock. Go ahead and, uh, make your comments. We do ask that you keep them within three minutes.
Alright, thank you. Um, the one thing that I always loved about driving down Main Street is that I could look at all the businesses and I would see, oh my God, there's a new place over there. I'm gonna pull over here and go check them out and stuff. Um, I'm not comfortable doing that. So I don't understand how this is supposed to be, uh, giving Main Street more businesses, people, because I am just so uncomfortable. I have completely avoided Main Street after I drove it through the first time and I just no- now go cross the bridge and go over Fourth. So sorry, all you businesses that I used to love and go check out, I'm not going there anymore.
Okay, thank you Lori. Okay? So the next person I see, all I see is Martinez, Martinez. So go ahead and speak. You're muted right now. Looks like your mic is muted, uh, Martinez. So if you would unmute yourself, Ms., Ms. Martinez, will you please share with that person how to unmute themselves?
Yeah, so there's a microphone in your lower left-hand corner. It should be a little microphone. Just click on that to unmute. If you're on a phone, it's star six.
So Martinez, for the sake of time, we're not going to forget about you, but we're gonna move on down the list because you're still muted. Uh, we will come back to you, uh, at a later time. So the next person I show is Callie Adams. Callie Adams. Callie?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
So, um, I wanna say that the person, the firm that we hired, um, he didn't just research and plan, but he, he really researched the plans that he had already done before he started doing a plan with Alamosa. And he did research, um, towns that were similar to Alamosa, especially with weather. He really has done a lot of Colorado towns. And so I believe that he had a lot of really good research and understanding behind the plan before he, um, helped us implement it here. Um, we do have the possibility of going around the downtown if we don't want to drive down, uh, congested Main Street. Um, and our top priority really should be our pedestrian safety. And we've seen from the statistics that our pedestrians are gonna be safer when we implement a road diet. Um, we also have an increased amount of parking, so we can actually have more people frequenting our downtown than we did before. Um, and that makes us have a more vibrant downtown and it increases our foot traffic and really helps our businesses come back to life down there cause we were dying before this happened. Um, and actually our fear and our concern about the, the road diet being so narrow is actually proving the point of exactly what they're trying to do with the road diet, which is causing us to slow down in the downtown and, and participate in that tension that causes us to have a more safe um, and pedestrian friendly downtown. Um, I actually was out there while city council was spending time downtown, um, watching the traffic to see how everything worked. And as I was about to cross the street, all traffic came to a stop and let me cross the street. And I think that's huge because that's not something that would have happened when people were barreling down Main Street, um, before. And now it really causes us to be more careful. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, by short hands, how many of you may have similar comments? Good. Alright, okay. So that brings us to, uh, Ms. Rowena Martinez. Uh, you are muted right now. Um, Ms. Marti- there you go.
Am I there now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, my main concern, I didn't get to hear the whole part of everybody else speaking, but my main concern was um, watching the, not it being- the not it being disabled friendly. Because I was watching a few people going to the restaurants and having struggling trying to get over to you know, that block and then the sidewalk. That was my main concern about that. I understand that yes, it's to help our businesses, but also the lanes are narrow for people, especially when you got big vehicles parking there. Like the other day, there was a big trailer parked there, but it was sticking so far out that it didn't allow me enough room to move over. I had to stop and wait for the traffic on my left-hand side to go by. And then so, you know, it causes us to slow down more. I understand that, but maybe somehow we can adjust the parking some way, maybe open up in the back somewhere, letting them know that there's parking in the back, back there where the the flea market or the farmer's market is. Maybe something like that too, you know? And just trying to really seeing how tight it is when we go down that main street. I'm sorry, I'm kind of rough on talking. But I'm in the hospital right now. So just I'm just hoping maybe somehow we could make those adjustments and put up maybe some more signs coming off that bridge if they have to use Fourth Street. Let them know that Fourth Street's available, but also the cheese, please follow the traffic laws. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and we hope you get the feeling better.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Cool. Okay, that gives brings us to the next person. Dennis and Dennis and Cheryl O'Dowd. Dennis and Cheryl, you're next. So, okay, you're muted. If you would hit, what is it? Star to unmute them.
It's star six.
Stars, star six to be unmuted.
But it looks like they're on the app, so they should be able to hit the unmute button.
Okay. So there's an unmute button. Yes, thank you.
I'm so sorry. Okay. Thank you for letting me talk. I am going to tell you that I agree with most of the people that have spoken. First of all, I do believe that Alamosa has to have a facelift. There's a lot of businesses down there that have taken effort to make their businesses attractive and to entice people in. The problem that I see, and I I heard it tonight, is that the way they've got the the roadway, people are concentrating on not hitting the cars next to them and nobody's looking at the businesses that they're passing by. We ourselves have had problems where you've parked and trying to get out, you have to wait, of course, until some until there's a clearing. But it has made it to where, once you get out, it's a chore to get to the sidewalk. So I understand where people are talking about that. I have an idea and I've not heard it spoken tonight, so I'm gonna talk about it. I have been in some small towns where they have been very creative. They've actually made it to where the two lanes kind of have a curve or an attractive design. And instead of having parking on both sides at the same time, what about doing ten or fifteen parking spots on the right side, ten or fifteen parking spots on the left side and to where it's really opens up those two lanes and gives it a shoulder on each side to where it kind of creates this beautiful atmosphere that takes away that anxiety for all of us that have to travel it. And so that's kind of my concept. Anyway, thank you for being willing to listen to your constituents' ideas and thoughts. Because honestly, those petitions that got signed, I know there's a whole lot more people that want to see a change. And like everybody has said, now's the time to do it before somebody sues us because of the fact that somebody has gotten killed. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. By short hands, how many of you have similar comments? Okay. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have someone with the name of Sunstone six two three. Sunstone six two three.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you would state your name for us, we appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Jones Kelleher.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. I just want to say I've been listening to everybody's comments tonight. And I have been born and raised. I'm a native of Alamosa. And my father had a business on Main Street in the nineteen eighties. My husband, his family started a business on Main Street in the nineteen sixties, which we took over in the early two thousands. I currently own property on Main Street. And the old adage is kind of if it isn't broke, don't fix it. So I first want to just say I appreciate all of the effort and everything that has gone into making downtown more attractive and being a better place for people to come and enjoy downtown, to bring businesses and to improve our community. A lot of the things that have been stated tonight that I'm not gonna repeat, but just highlight on the snow removal, the handicap parking. There used to be street sweepers that would go down the street and clean that area. Now with the barricades that are there, I don't know how they're going to remove the snow. I don't know how we're gonna get all of that area cleaned up. The parking, when we talk about, I had looked online and it said something about improving alleyways. I know right now JC Penney's used to have a huge parking lot behind that area. And currently, a lot of times there's other businesses that utilize that space, which is great. But when that space is being utilized or San Juan is being blocked off or block parties, that really minimizes the parking space. So we don't have access to our buildings and our businesses for people to be able to get to Main Street. So I'm wondering where is the extra parking going to come from? How is that going to be accommodated along with the handicap parking, which has been talked about? There is just not enough space when you park on Main Street to get out of your car and not be hit by oncoming traffic. That is a huge concern that I think has been stated over and over again tonight. I've just never seen this, like I said, since I was a kid in the eighties. I've never seen this problem before. You know, slowing down traffic so that people can appreciate.
Okay, Jennifer, you've reached your three minutes. We want to thank you for your comments. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay. That brings us to next is Casey McCoy.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Casey.
Okay. Thank you so much for for letting me speak. I sure appreciate it. Same thing, I I don't want to take up a whole lot of time. You know, there's a lot of stuff that's already been said that I agree with. You know, I am a parent, I am an artist, so I do agree with a lot of the things that have been said, you know, about the facelift on town. I would love to contribute that to that one day, Casey McCoy Arts LLC. So one of these one of these days, I would love to be able to help out with that. So really quick, my concern is like everybody else's with the parking. You know, I have my own children. I know it's scary for me just getting out onto the you know, getting out of my car to get the kids already before. You know, it was scary getting them out on their side. I definitely will not do that now. The snow removal and everything else that has been said. So the one of the biggest concerns that I have that hasn't been talked about is we've got lane shifts too. You know, it's already, it already was a little bit of a challenge going from or going into a one-way. But but now we've got lane shifts that go from the two lanes, they shift over. Same thing like when you're leaving town, like getting ready to go over the bridge, you you end the lane there. But with all that, it's just, it's made it a little bit harder. These spaces have been eliminated. The main problem has been parking. That's what everybody has been talking about. How come we don't have a good place for us to park at? Instead of trying to get off of this highway that we're coming through from Main Street, trying to get off that and into these shops, there really should be one or the other. We should be able to to go somewhere where people can park so we can safely walk without worrying about mirrors being hit or anything like that. Like there should be a place where we could park in general because it's eliminating the parking space that we used to have. I don't think is the answer. It looks great. I think I think it's it's an awesome idea. And wherever I can help contribute, I would love to do that in the future, but I don't know if this is the answer. And I think I think we should be thinking about the overall problem and trying to get more parking. I work for a job right now. The health insurance place, Friday Friday Health Plans. And they're growing and parking's, you know, getting even limited for us. So it's it's and I know more and more people are gonna be wanting to park. We really need a place where we can park and safely walk to these shops and stuff like that. But those are my main concerns and questions and and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Casey, very much. And by short hands, if I could see how many have similar comments as Casey, as well as Jennifer in the earlier comments. All right. Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next person, Jen Martinez. Jen, you, there you go.
There I am. So mine's more of a question and a recommendation. My first question is, what is the city doing to address moving from the two-lane back and transitioning back to the third lane? I'm not sure if the council's where there was an accident within the last week that occurred there where a car hit a truck pulling a trailer. And I think that was due to confusion in lines and where everything was occurring. My second, my recommendation to the council is when you start addressing future updates to the city, I, you know, I think help clearing up those alleys is a great thing to do. But also when you do that, please consider the food distribution companies that do come in and deliver products to the, you know, the businesses down there. Make sure you don't take away some of the areas where they, that's the only place for them to go now to deliver their food. You know, make sure you address that when when looking at alleyways. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you very much. And by short hands, how many of you may have similar comments as Jen? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, the next person we have is Lori Sharp. Okay, sorry. Thank you all for keeping track of that. See how efficient this staff is. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Go to the next one. We'll go to Rod and Michelle Mundragon.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank y'all for your service. And I want to say what's up to Coach V Hill. But, you know, I just moved back a few years back and and I really appreciate what you guys are trying to do, but at the end of the day, yeah, I don't understand how you guys plan on doing outside eating three times out of the year, number one. But don't forget to go eat at Woody's Barbecue, best barbecue in America. But at the end of the day, I really wish you guys just go back to old school, two-way traffic, make make the the road coming off the bridge, alternate route, and then keep the other alternate route and make downtown back where it was and let's get downtown back where it used to be. I mean, when you guys changed it, that killed our downtown. And that's all I gotta say.
Okay, thank you, Rod. By show of hands, how many of you have similar comments as Rod? Okay. Thank you. All right. So it looks like we're approaching the end of the people who have their hands. This Jennifer Carr, that's the same one again, right? That's a different one? That's another one? Okay, thank you. Jennifer Carr, you're next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've lived here for a long time and I do appreciate the fact that you're trying to make downtown more appealing because we've needed that for a long time. One of my concerns is if people start going down, I believe that would be Fourth Street all the time, and I've seen a bunch of semis. Is that road really made for that type of traffic? There's a lot of houses there, people who live there, kids running around. I don't know that that should be the alternate route for avoiding Main Street. My other question is there's some people who live on Main Street and they have apartments above the businesses. How are they supposed to get, say, groceries or things like that into their homes with the parking the way it is? So that's a concern of mine. And also, of course, everybody's talked about the snow removal. But who's responsible from the curb to the little barriers? Because in the past, businesses were responsible to keep their sidewalks clean when it snowed. But are they then going to be responsible from their business to the street where people park now? And those are just the questions that I had.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. And how many of you have similar comments as Jennifer? Okay, all right, thank you very much. So I am going to do to the Zoom audience as we did to our live audience. I am going to give you all one last opportunity to raise your hand. And the way you raise your hand, Ms. Martinez, if you can tell them how to raise their hand again.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app, use the raise your hand button on the app. If you're on the telephone, it'll be star nine.
Okay. So we're gonna do just like we did for the live audience so we can be fair and transparent in this manner. Going once, if you have a comment, raise your hand. We're gonna go three times and that's gonna be it. And we're gonna bring it back to staff. No further comments will be made by the audience. There'll just be staff and council going twice.
Mayor, we did have somebody raise their hand.
We have a person who just raised their hand. Go ahead and unmute yourselves by hitting star six. You can hit star six and you'll be unmuted, okay?
Or you can press the microphone button to unmute yourself.
I pressed the microphone button to unmute yourself. Okay, we're gonna give you another chance to unmute yourself. You can press the microphone button at the bottom and unmute yourself. Or you can hit star six. Those are the two ways to unmute yourself. We're trying to be fair to give everybody who wanted to participate an opportunity to speak, but you have to be able to unmute yourself. Is there anything else we can do to unmute them?
No, there's a button that I pushed that says ask to unmute, but they're not unmuting.
Okay, user. We we try to give you an opportunity to unmute yourself. But for the sake of time, there's not anything else we can do to help you at this point. But feel free to reach back out to council at a later date. Staff, we're gonna go ahead and in the Zoom section, I believe this Lori Sharp has already spoke once. So to be fair, like we did to everybody else, we're not gonna go back to that. So we're bringing it back to staff, our city attorney, city manager for comments to answer some of the questions that we have the answers to. And also we'll bring it back to council for additional comments. Okay? All right, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been an amazing night and a lot of people are, they care very much about our community and making it better. And so I'm not gonna go back and forth on a lot of the different points. A lot of the stuff I presented at the beginning might provide information related to some of the questions or items brought up. But I did make some notes to to come back to. One of the questions is on the snow removal. Currently or prior to the design change, CDOT would plow to the parking areas and then within twenty-four hours, we would try to have our crews there to pick up the snow. We are working with CDOT on what that is gonna look like, if it's still gonna be plowed to the parking and if we have to have no parking during snowstorms in order to get in there and do that removal. So Um, so we are in discussions with CDOT on that. Our streets crews also um were aware, we had a lot of discussions when we made this design change, both from not being able to get a street sweeper in there during the times. And so what do we need from an equipment perspective to keep it clean? And then the other is from a snow removal. And so they have been preparing to have their correct equipment to be able to handle that. This doesn't have anything to do with the safety concerns, but there is a bit of a bonus to us having um this space in that us being able to get in there and fix some of the storm drains where you sometimes see the water accumulating and then that can freeze. Now that this is gonna be ours and not CDOT's, we can get in there more easily and make those types of repairs. And so that has nothing to do with the safety concerns that have been raised, but I did want to mention that. Um, in regards to to parking enforcement, given some of the parking issues we've had downtown recently, we have been increasing our enforcement, especially related more to the two-hour parking. Um, it is something, though, if our officers are down there doing that kind of parking enforcement, and if they see someone who's clearly outside of that twelve feet and creating a hazardous situation, that we would be doing parking enforcement related to that as well. In regards to the wide loads, um, I think that is something that is similar to even when it was three lanes, they were exceeding the lane the lane width. And so that is something where obviously um we allow them to go through town and and adjust and and take up then the center if that is what they need to do. There is um a lot of, there's not a lot, there's a few talking about going back to the two-way. So I did want to share that was actually one of the more contentious part of our downtown plan. Um, we did there's a lot of people interested in going back to two-way, including some on council. When we did the surveys with the public, though, our community was actually split fifty-fifty. And so half of the community wanted us to go back to two-way, half of us did not want us to go back to two-way. Um, when the consultant dug into that a little bit further about how strongly do you hold that opinion? What they found out is those who want it to stay one way, um i- if we changed it, we're we're gonna come storming City Hall and really upset. Those who wanted it to go back to two-way were like, we think it's a good idea if it happens at some point. So they were a little more relaxed about it. So what we ended up adopting for the downtown plan is, since it is such a heavily divisive issue right now and there's not clear direction, is is not to make that change right now. But the design that has been proposed and adopted will still fit if we do make that that change. We wanted to ensure that there's not gonna be any wasted taxpayer money that if five, ten years from now, the public changes and there is more um, a a higher percentage that are open to doing the two-way, that there hasn't been any wasted funding. And so the changes that are in place would still work from a two-way perspective as well. The other item that I wanted to share, just give me one second. So I know I shared this as part of my presentation to begin with, but I just, you know, want to reemphasize again as far as the parking is important for the downtown. And and so you have the parking that's on the side streets, which is significant, as well as the multiple parking lots that are located here. Someone did bring up the idea of better signage, and that is something that Councilor Grego brought up as well. So with our wayfinding, we're gonna make sure that not only is our signage better at the entrances, but that it's also better so people driving know that if you turn, there's public parking. So we are looking at that to make sure that where that public parking is available um is more easily identifiable. Um, so that is part of it. There is some comments related to the ADA and and those concerns. I think what I want to point out is our ADA ramps are on the corners. And so, yes, we did before have maybe one or two spots that were on the street, but they were always parked, uh, they were always up by the ramps. Um, so the the concern of not having ADA mid-block is not something we would had we would have had before either, because then they're going in the bike lane previously, all the way to a corner in order to access an ADA ramp type of thing. So all of our ADA is, that's why it's focused to to where you can get on um from a ramp perspective. The the elderly um and and getting over the curb. Again, I would emphasize that there is other street parking and and parking lot parking. And just a minute, I wanted to just take a quick look at my notes real fast. Um, someone did bring up that some of the restaurants don't have parklets. Um, so the first time when we were able to get some CARES funding and a grant related to COVID, we did contact all the restaurants and wanted to find out who was interested, and we bought the parklets for them. I think some of the restaurants realized maybe that was something they should have done. And so we are, we are reaching back out to those restaurants. Um, and those who are interested, council has earmarked funding to be able to buy additional parklets. And so that is something that we are looking at. And um, there was one is one person want asking, you know, when we're gonna go back to three lanes. I think a majority of what we have been monitoring and CDOT's been monitoring is related more to the width of the parking. Um, and those types of things, it really is not on our radar to go back to three. Um, and so I want to be straightforward with that. But I also know at the last council meeting, um, Councilor Daniel had a question as far as, you know, to manage expectations, when would we be looking at maybe some additional changes? And so to further answer that, if there's immediate, such as the striping of the lanes, those were, that was something that needed to happen immediately. Um, some of the signage we might put up related to being able to say it's okay to pull up into that bulb-out area to look might be an immediate item that we're looking at. The other is that um we are looking with CDOT in regards to if you do have a semi or a delivery truck parked there in that eight and a half, that does fill that location. So that gets back to then Counselor Daniel saying, how long are we gonna monitor that? So that is something we are monitoring. Um, it to to add a foot or a foot and a half, it's not impossible. Everyone's correct when they say that. Um, but what it does involve is those concrete wheel stops don't just come up, you have to break them off. And so we have to order more, you have to do the traffic control plan and all of that. So we really want to make sure we're monitoring this and and doing it for the right reasons. And so tracking the situation with the traffic and all of that. But that is something we're talking with CDOT about on monitoring for those purposes. Um, and so I don't want anyone to think that that's not on the radar. And just give me one second. I think that was, you know, the the remaining items that I just wanted to reemphasize.
I would only add, Heather, could you address the emergency access?
Oh, yes, thank you. That is, I have that here and I didn't address that. Um, I cannot speak for the um ambulance district and and their control over their routes. With this new reconfiguration, both our police and fire will not, unless we're responding to an area that fronts Main Street, we won't be using Main Street as our way as a traffic control to to be able to get through. We'll be using the Fourth Street or some of the other streets to to move quickly to respond.
Hey, I believe we have Council Carson with his light on. Uh, Council Carson?
Um, I'm just waiting for everybody for counsel. Are we ready for that?
Uh, well, we're we're, I believe she was just about done, so go ahead.
I do have one, I'm sorry, I do have one more. There was someone who was referencing an accident that was not presented in my my listed. That's because that accident was actually down on Main and Ross, which is outside of this project area.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Council Carson. Then council, um, I'll recognize you by your mics being on, okay? If your mics are facing directly towards me, I cannot see the light, so just twist it a little bit, okay? All right, thank you. You're good.
So I I just wanted to, I I have a few comments to make, but first I want to start out by addressing the comment of uh, I can't remember her name. But she made a comment about her stopping. You know, she should, she stopped to allow pedestrians to pass by or traffic stopped to allow her, one of those things. Just just to iterate that, that that's the goal. And that's what we should be doing. We should stop or slow down when somebody's crossing Main Street. So so to the comments of the person earlier that said that they would like to see people being better to each other, I I agree. I think especially with COVID, people have become a little more jerky and things like this will remind you to slow down and and to address that, because we do have traffic, foot traffic walking through there. Now, that being said, um I have gone downtown and assessed this. I did it on a busy day during the week and I did it on a Sunday. And I have a fairly big truck that does push that limit, so it maxes that out. Um, and I was up against the curb and it doesn't feel safe. As I'm leaning out, I did almost get plowed by a car one day, and this was on a Sunday. So people have valid concerns and we should address. I do have concerns, Heather, you know, with the ADA. There was a ton of people that spoke about that. And I think as we move forward, we do have to address that. I I just think it's it's something that has to be done. I don't know how we do that. I don't know if we knock one of those curb stops out and create, you know, cut in a handicapped area, but I do think that we're probably eventually gonna have to address that. Places like Lewis's where he's got uh elderly people or people that are looking for medical equipment going in and out of his shop, I think that's kind of something that we need to address. So, you know, we we are gonna have to make some changes, I do believe. But again, like Counselor Daniel said, we have to monitor it. We we did look at this on paper and it did look great. And and I'll I'll be the first one to say that I saw it on paper and it looked fine to me. And I maybe didn't give it the credence that I should have now looking at this audience and and uh, you know, that's my fault. But again, we deal with a lot of things as council and and not to make excuses, but some of these things, you know, you you do have to correct them along the way. And this isn't set in stone, like our city manager said. We do have a lot of it that's permanent and we're not just gonna change it back, but we do have some adjustments to make. And so I I do think we need to address the ADA. You know, this is a something that I'll throw out and and the city manager may not be happy and other people, Harry may not be happy. But I think one easy way to do it is if you're gonna address it is we you know, if we're gonna pull back those curbs at all, we pull them back. And as we're doing that, we run a chip seal on those three blocks and reline it so it's nice branding lines. That would be my desire. I don't know that we can do that, but that would be my desire. I personally think that as we get used to it, it's not gonna be that big a deal. I I'm surprised that you said it takes forty-eight seconds to drive that that those blocks at twenty-five miles an hour, because to me it seems really quick. And I've driven it on a weekday when it's busy with my trailer. I've got a trailer to pull the side-by-sides and it's about ten feet wide. And, you know, again, my my driving skills aren't the same as everyone's in the room, so I don't feel as uncomfortable. But, you know, in twenty years, I might. And and so the thing is, is we have to address everybody's concerns. We're not gonna make everybody happy. We never will. But we're gonna have to, as a community, come together and embrace it eventually, whatever the changes end up being. Because we're not just gonna go back to three lanes and we're not gonna go backwards, because the plan is to move forward. The beautification of the alleys, the improvement of downtown is a general idea and it's a general uh mantra and, you know, forward-moving theory is gonna happen. We have to do it. And at the beginning of this, I I fought and I stated a couple of times and I've stated it now through these conversations. I think that naturally, traffic's gonna move to Fourth Street. Now, that may not make people happy and it may not make you know, the few residents that are on there, because I've driven it and looked at the amount of residential um homes there and it's it's not as many as people would think. Again, that's not a comforting thought, but I think naturally, traffic's gonna move to there. Now, people brought up a valid point, is that street capable of it? I don't know. We don't have, I don't have answers to that right now. And again, it's something that we'll have to address in the future. The snow removal, to me, was was quite a conundrum when I saw it. I I didn't understand it at all. I don't know if you're, if the business owners are gonna have to go out there with a shovel and get that out of there. Again, it's something that we're gonna have to address. I think cutting a curb stop in there, I mean, cutting out one of those curb stops and cutting an ADA ramp may help with that snow remove in the long run. You can push it to those areas if we have a central point there. Now, a- as upset as everyone is that has valid concerns, you gotta understand that, again, we're moving forward in the best way we know how at this moment. We have to fix what people aren't happy with. We did see it on paper and to me, it looked fine. But again, like someone else said, when you plan something and you go to implement it, it may look a little different or feel a little different. And so this is one of those situations. Now, the whole thing about, you know, pointing fingers at council, pointing fingers at the city manager, this was, you know, this was something that we all voted for. I'll take accountability for it. But again, I drive down and I think Main Street looks pretty good. Besides the line striping and some of the issues that we have that we've already talked about. But we're gonna have to address them. We're gonna have to move forward and you know, as always, you know, we have a people, a couple of people in here that are running for city council. And I can commend you and I thank you guys for showing up. And I thank the seventy people that showed up on Zoom and and the fifty people that showed up in here, because you know, it's important. And this goes to show you that we have people that care. And again, best way, if you're not happy with your city government, is run. Step up to that plate and make an effort to do something. Because this isn't a very thankful job. It's rough. And so with that, you know, I I say we need to embrace it and and give us some, you know, have some patience and move forward with us. Because when all that comes together, as these alleys are fixed up and cleaned up with these, with this new brick and this washed look, it's gonna be great. And I've heard people, somebody told Counselor Daniels, Alamoza's not a destination. That's crap. We're in the middle of the valley. Everybody passes through here on the way to everywhere else around us. And so you're gonna get that traffic. And what we do with it is up to us. Now, again, I really think traffic's gonna move to Fourth. It's gonna have to eventually. If I was a truck driver, uh, Noel said, you know, he didn't feel comfortable with his drivers going down there and I, you know, I I may feel the same way if I was a truck driver. Because again, a semi is a lot different than a truck pulling side-by-sides. But, you know, we ain't gonna know that till till we move forward and we see how that works out. And, you know, one of you guys wins, council, or is up here, you'll see the challenges we're facing right now. And you'll see those challenges moving forward. And, you know, a lot of times they're not thankful. A lot of times we're here till eleven o'clock managing this stuff. And again, have patience. It's easy to point the finger. It's a lot harder to be up here and deal with this. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Carson. Okay, we're gonna go in the order, um, in which I'm not for sure, Ms. Brooks, if you had a comment to Council Carson. Okay, so we go to Council Grego, followed by Council Brawls, followed by Council Daniel. Okay, so you're know that order. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I I'm not gonna be as long-winded as my fellow counselor Carson, but first I'd like to thank everybody that came and on Zoom. And what I really wanna point out is the fact, the respect of our constituents. You know, I've 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 gone to some of these meetings where people are fighting against each other, the respect that we have out here and the people that love their community. You know, I suggested that we have this, because everything is not set in concrete. All the comments that you made, it's not gonna fall like some people say on deaf ears. We're gonna go back and look at this and see where we can make changes. And like, safety seniors and all that, that's very important to us, you know, and like they keep on saying on paper and and reality, it's two different things. But this, we're gonna look at it. It's not gonna for people to say, well, don't don't go to council because it's, they're not gonna do nothing about it. We are gonna do something, what I am. And I'm sure that my fellow counselors, who have listened to all of you guys, and it took time to come over here and express yourselves, we are gonna listen. We are gonna do something. You know, it it's, I I see the nervousness and stuff and there there's, that everything's gotta be tweaked and fixed or where everybody, and it's gotta be a win-win situation for everybody. You know, it it just can't be a city way or or the constituent way. It's gotta be both ways, where where we all take some and give some. And I think that'll work. But uh, I, we're gonna look at this and a lot of great comments, you know, petitions and stuff, that's great. You know, we're gonna listen to that and and look at it and see how we can work with this. Like I say, and I keep saying it, it's not gonna fall on deaf ears. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Grego, Council Brawls, followed by Council Daniel.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not as winded either, so be pretty brief. But uh, I I really appreciate people coming out to make comments, because uh, it it helps us a lot. And I like, you know, what uh what Jim said. He said, you know, if we make a mistake, let's let's fix it. And I I agree with that. If it's a mistake, we're gonna fix those mistakes. But I do like the downtown beautification project. I think it adds to economic development. And I like what was said tonight by one person. They said, you know, we're not used, we have not seen this before. I think that's the crux. We were not used to this. We have not seen this before. And I'd like to give it time. And we can tweak it. Uh, I I I'm 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 in favor of kind of moving uh, the barriers back, you know, uh, widen about eighteen, about eighteen inches. And uh, yeah, and uh you know, I uh, and you know, and I'm 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 a little concerned about those wooden curbs, you know, uh, it's easy to trip over. So maybe, maybe something that can be fixed. So I I think we can fix a couple of things. But I'm I'm just saying, let's, as a community, let's give it time. Let's go through a season. Let's get used to this and let's see if it really worked for for downtown because we have to do something for the revitalization of our community. We really do. And given, given this a chance and you see if it works, uh it'll work. But if it doesn't work, hey, I think uh city council will 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 make those changes. So I'm I I'm for it. I wanna see it happen. I'm for economic development. I like it because uh downtown looks busier. When I cross the street now, I feel safer walking across the street uh rather than trying to walk across three lanes, walk across two lanes and I feel safer. And I I would just like to give it time. Uh and uh and I and I stand behind what we what we're doing and and yes, we'll we'll tweak it as time goes forward. And uh I uh and I appreciate everybody's comments. We all have, we all have different attitudes, all have different perspectives. Our optics are different and I appreciate that as we take that consideration. So so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Ms. Brooks, did you have any comments or any any of the comments so far before we go into the rest of the council? Okay, somebody. Mike and then I'll go back to you.
Okay, there it is. Um I was just, I didn't know if you wanted to do a reminder about the decorum as counselors are talking and making sure people aren't being interrupted.
Yes, I was about to do that. I just wanted to make sure. So the decorum is, is if you don't mind, um we like to have orderly meetings and I have to commend you for most part, you have been very orderly, but as council is speaking, we ask that you don't make any comments from the audience. Okay, thank you. Uh Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um and as we asked you all to do, I'm not gonna repeat everything that all of my fellow counselors have said that I agree with. So I just wanted to say thank you, Council, for that. Um I was very impressed um tonight with the comments that we received and the information that people brought forward and I wanna say thank you very much for that and thank you for sharing the information that you have. It means so much when people come out. And I I would love to encourage you to come out at the beginning of the processes too. And Ruthie, I know you were there and you were giving information and appreciated that so much. Um and and I would love to see more people out there doing that because what happens is it would make this part of the process a little bit easier. Um and so I I feel like everyone has the the right things in mind for Alamosa and we all want things to be safe and better and more productive and easier for our downtown businesses and easier for our pedestrians. And when we're planning that process, um someone made some comments about like all of these people in the lofty towers making these decisions and that's why we pay them to come to us with recommendations and to receive input from from the community and to have those things, but we do have to make decisions. And we have to try things out and we have to try to move forward with them. And so when we see a snag and when we've hit a roadblock, we can absolutely adjust. But I want to really be honest about what my expectation is for those adjustments. Those adjustments are not gonna be redoing the entire downtown plan. They're not going to be scrapping everything that we've done. They're going to be minor tweaks and adjustments for people feel safer because that is a huge, huge concern and that perception is really, really important. So making people feel safe, actually allowing them to be safe, not just feeling safe, but allowing safety to increase. And really having us come together to make it work. We're not gonna blow up what we've done. Um there's been a lot of positive movement. And so I just wanna say thank you A to the staff for trying to figure this out, B for you all coming to let us know what you think about the the things. And then really hope that in the future, we can all come together earlier so we can have the discussions to help inform the plans with more input than we had, even though we had a lot of input. I would love to have more input than we did. So these situations are easier in the future. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Hensley, and I believe followed by Counselor Veho.
So similar is I'm not gonna try not to repeat everything. Um but I do, I guess one thing I will repeat is the fact that the passion both for those that are here and those online. And also I'd like to add those that sent me emails. I got a lot of emails also of people that couldn't make it one way or the other. Um and so that was really appreciated as well. Um so it it makes it so, um it's neat to see that there's that same love for the community that I have and why I do what I do and try to try to make things better. What I'd like to say is, these are all really good points. I've written them all down. They make a lot of sense. I it's it's those things to really look at. I I personally, I think I need to let them percolate. I need to sort of really, I've been looking, I've been downtown, I've been watching things. But now I'm gonna even be more aware and and see those things and see, are there things that we need to change? The way I look at is think this, um what we do in the city, what I do for myself, what we do in everything we do, it's always a work in progress. So the way I look at it, there's never an end. It's always going to be, we're gonna continue to develop, we're gonna continue to make the changes. And so my thought process is, yes, we've made these changes. Are there things we need to adjust? Obviously, when we see a snow, there may be things are like, oh, we didn't see that. We didn't expect that. So my thought there is um totally being open-minded. I think always as I've been on council, I'm I'm a really open-minded. I listen. And so that idea there is that, let's see where things go and what I'm sure that like anything, when you make a major change, there's going to be some tweaking. You build a new house. It doesn't always go perfect the way you build a new house. There's some things you're gonna have to adjust. So we'll take a look at that and I your feedback means a lot to me in the sense of that idea of what to really look at and keeping an eye out for those things. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley, Counselor Veho.
Thank you, Mayor. Because this this agenda item is also called discussion, is it, can I ask someone in the crowd a question? Because it it kind of, um it means a lot to me and I wanna know. And it's it's to Ruthie and it's you, I know you sent all them petitions to CDOT. Did they say anything back to you about that or do they have it on their radar or what? Thank you, Ruthie.
So Counselor Veho, I can-
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, can you comment on it?
Yes, we've had a meeting with Julie, um who's the regional director, I believe. They are aware of it and those are the different discussions than we've been having, especially regarding the striping and at the intersections. And then that's also what we talked about is monitoring the parking, especially if it's a, it's a a delivery truck or or something like that that we're monitoring. Um the reason it was approved is because it meets specifications from a traffic engineering perspective.
Thank you, Heather. Um just wanna quick, thank the, thanks, thank, thank you to everybody who showed up tonight and everybody on Zoom. Uh thank you for your opinion. Uh I will take it um and listen to you all. I know Ms. Daniel, we talked about a month ago when we put this in that we would give it like a six-month a wait and see in that, but I don't think we can wait and see. After listening to everybody tonight, I think we need to move quickly on moving those new curbs back to the sidewalk. Mr. Gray, we talk about win-win situation. Uh the downtown businesses want more space to to do more things outside, like the restaurants. If we move the curbs back a little bit, they still get that. And then people are still safe and feel safe getting out of the car. That that's a concern to me. Uh my wife went down there just last night to pick up supper and she wasn't safe. She didn't feel safe. So I think we should, that piece of that six-month thing, I think we should, we should do a hell of a lot quicker. If it, if um and I'll keep on pushing that. And and I I I said that two weeks ago at our city council meeting and I did say, I'm not gonna lie, I said we should move it back eighteen, uh twelve to eighteen inches back towards the sidewalk. But if I'm hearing from an expert from CDOT about the uh pounding of the snow, then we gotta do even more. And that's that's where I'm at with that. I do agree with you, Mr. Carson, about the the ADA. I guess I have a question to you, Heather, about um handicap parking and on the original, on so uh downtown of a month and a half ago, was there dedicated handicap parking on the street?
There was only a few spots, not very many, and they were near the corner where the ramps are.
All right. So ma- maybe, maybe we could, we can add that to um and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks or uh city attorney, do you have any comments to council so far? Okay, council, do you have any additional comments before I wrap things up?
Yeah, I do wanna say so.
No, go ahead.
I agree with Counselor Veho. We do need to expedite some of the changes. Um but you know, I I want, I wanna put this out there. I really do think that if we think about the handicap, the ADA piece, uh we might be able to fix that, you know, at the center of each block, maybe do something to fix that. I mean, it's not that hard to cut a, to cut a ramp in. From a concrete standpoint, I've I've done it and it's not, if you have the right equipment, a concrete company can do it fairly easy. But I think if we remove one of those curbs, uh it gives us that that amount of room to be able to move either a four-wheeler or something in to collect that snow at the middle of that block and that may that may solve a few problems because we would have either ADA parkings at tho- near those breaks, near that break in the middle of the block. And the ability to move that snow and then it's a safer in and out, you know, if we do have that space. So I just want, want people thinking about that. Um thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um so I agree that if there are things that can be shifted earlier and makes sense to shift earlier based on assessment, that we should absolutely do that. I also think getting used to any new traffic pattern, any new thing, any new change takes at least six months. So if there needs to be more space and that's what's assessed and we have that conversation with our planners and CDOT and everyone and that's the the safety issue that needs to be addressed, I absolutely agree moving that forward. And it may still feel uncomfortable for six months. It may still feel different and difficult. And so I wanna be really honest and clear about that, that if we switch things too soon, we're not gonna fix the problem. We're gonna fix a problem that we see right now, but it may not be the long-term problem we need to fix. And so I just wanna be cautious about making changes too quickly because we're solving a problem that may not be there in six months. And so I just wanna think that through as we do this and get really good ideas about that. Like I'm not saying they're not real problems. I'm just saying we need to think about having unintended consequences of fixing something too soon.
Okay, Counselor Carson. And uh sorry, audience, but we we're not going back and forth with the audience. Um so we're just talking to council. I see some of you wanting to raise your hands. That's not what we're gonna do tonight, okay? Um not in this format. So I apologize about that. We're not ignoring you, but that's just not the way we handle our meetings, okay? Um so go ahead, Counselor Carson.
I guess just for clarification, um that the statement you just made, I I'm confused because I don't think that if we wait, I mean, I don't think waiting six months is going to fix the the one-foot issue. You know what I mean? Holding off six months isn't gonna make that better. I agree with you on the traffic patterns. Change is hard. But I think one of the biggest issues right now, and I saw it, when I parked my truck there, it's really, really close. Even if you're right up against the curb, I mean, I'm I I'm a pretty good parallel parker. I'm I'm actually very good and it's very uncomfortable to parallel park. And so that immediate issue I think needs to be addressed. Before we have snow, I think that needs to be addressed because I, the minute I saw it, I didn't understand snow removal at all. I, you know, and from an ice standpoint, because Heather and I had this conversation, you know, you have the drain stop up constantly. So she did, that is a good point, that we have easier access, but I'm not sure how waiting six months is going to alleviate the immediate safety concern. So I'm just putting that out there. I don't really think, agree on that. Um so I think we do have to address the safety concern a lot sooner.
And and I feel like you may have misunderstood what I was saying, Counselor Carson. I'm just saying I wanna make a decision that is the right long-term decision, not a short-term decision that then has unintended consequences. So I'm not saying we have to wait necessarily on making some of those safety changes. I just wanna make sure if we make them, we know what the long-term impact of them is before. And so if we need to wait a little longer to see that, I don't know that we do. I'm not saying that we do. I just wanna make a really good decision one time, so we don't have to pull up what we've already done twice. That's what I'm saying. That's it. So like that, I just to clarify, like I don't think we have to wait for everything. I just wanna be sure about the things we don't wait for, that they're really good long-term decisions.
I guess I just want clarification. What do you see as the long-term problem that we're waiting to change? Is it, is it the traffic pattern?
I think we need to look at everything again with all of the concerns that everyone brought up today and make sure that we have information about elderly. And if we change the way that we move that curb out, how is that gonna impact elderly and ADA? If we change the impact and we move the curb back and people are struggling with the width, the lane width because they have the wide trailers, is moving the the parking gonna make that better or worse? Like I just really wanna make sure we don't make a quick decision to fix something that then has unintended consequences. I wanna make quick changes, but I want long-term thinking when we make those decisions. That's all I'm asking for. Not that we don't make changes fast, that we just really think through the unintended consequences of making some of these changes.
Okay, all right. That's the way we do council. We go back and forth. We just have general discussions and that's all they're doing is just having a good discussion back and forth. All right, Counselor Veho, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm I'm kinda with Mr. Mr. Carson that I I would like that that's a safety concern. And and the and tourist season is coming down to an end. So the locals will are will be the ones parking downtown more. That's something that I think we can look at ASAP and get it done. And 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 win-win, right? So people feel safer parking downtown. And traffic will still be, will still be slower going through there. Okay, and businesses can still activate that area with whatever they wanna do. So that and then and then and at the same time, we can, we can look at painting a blue line on the corners for handicap folk. I think that's something that we can get done. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Counselor Carson, go ahead.
And uh Counselor Daniels, the reason I was, the reason I was trying to understand that is because if you look at this petition, if you look at the comments, if you listen to what everybody said tonight, um I think addressing those issues, that curb moving back and the ADA is gonna solve about seventy-five percent of people's concerns at least. And so that's why I say I think those two things would probably give us quite a more positive six months in the future than you know, holding out to see if people get used to trying to get out in twelve inches of of space. And so I I I think we do need to move forward a little quicker. So yeah, I think those two changes would address seventy-five percent of people's concerns is is my point. Thank you.
Okay, so um our attorney, did you wanna say something? Go ahead.
I understand that, but the thing is, is the difference between a road diet in in a community that again, some of the people in the audience stated it, we have a highway running through, so that traffic flows a little different than some of these other towns. So I I understand that. Um but I think that the the unintended consequences of widening that wouldn't be as mu- you know, as negative as the narrowing of it. And and so what I'm saying is, I really don't I've, again, I've been to other communities that have road diets and this just feels really a lot tighter. So I I don't think that that's gonna be an issue. But again, you know, we're gonna be in the winter months, six months down the road and and we'll be you know, neck deep in these issues and safety. So I think again, we really need to think about this quick.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, Counselor Greego.
Uh Mayor, I don't wanna prolong this meeting, but I had a question for the city manager. Wherever the the new curb ends and the old curb, eventually are we gonna go in there and fill that with concrete? Where it is like, it seems like it's one big sidewalk. So I I think that a lot of people think that it's gonna stay like that. This is just the first phase and when, once we establish wherever that curb is gonna go, we're gonna come back and we're gonna put that concrete or whatever we have to put in there. So you don't have to jump off the curve and into it like a hole and then start digging your snow out, you know?
So Counselor Greego, thank you.
I think you need to point that out because people don't think that that that's the way it's gonna stay. It's not gonna stay that way.
So that is the long-term vision is to extend the sidewalk out to the new curb line, uh wherever that curb line is. And so that will take care of it because when you do that, you have to move all of your stormwater and everything, if there's any other utilities and all of that. So for the first time- if there's any other utilities and all of that. So for the first time, we actually have a cost estimate for that, and I think it's a little over five million dollars. So that's why this was kind of seen as the first phase to at least get the traffic slower, get some of that outdoor live, to be able to jumpstart some of that and then figure out how to pay for the more extensive project.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, and I don't see any other red lights, and we still have some more meeting left, just as a reminder to you all. Um, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up in this part, from this part, if it's okay with you all, if everybody's voice your concerns.
I got, I got a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So there's, there's a couple of counselors up here who, who kind of want to expedite a process, or how, what are we going to do with that now?
So what I would like to do, instead of trying to design everything tonight, is, um, because that may not be the best, is to have staff take a look at it and look at the ADA, look at moving the curves, have some discussions with C dot. It doesn't have to wait six months for those discussions, but I just think it would be very wise to be out there measuring things, make sure we know how much you can move and not move, and all of those types of things. And then we can report back to council.
Okay.
There's stormwater issues related to ramps.
All right, going once, going twice. Have to do you all like the audience now. Okay. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and just wrap things up. First of all, I would like to thank all the audience who came here and participated, said what was on your mind and got it off your chest. We really appreciate it. Uh, thank you to all of the participants who participated on Zoom as well, uh, whether you made comments or you stayed on this, uh, uh, Zoom call this whole time. We really appreciate it and we re- really value your thoughts and your inputs. As, uh, all of you were talking, I can assure you, all of the council members have several notes on their sheets of paper, just like I have right now. And we will continue to have dialogue and conversation about this i- issue. But one thing we're trying not to do is we don't want to paint a picture and give you false hope. And sometimes people want to act prematurely and rush into judgment. There's a, a saying that says, um, "Progress is nearly impossible without change." We're trying to make meaningful progress, but we're trying to also, uh, in that process, have change that's going to be good for the overall community. Um, I know some of you probably want us to act and rush and just make a move right today. It's not going to happen. And we're not going to give false hope to that. It's going to happen because then that gets people more, uh, riled up. There's a saying, when you're talking about in construction, "Measure twice and cut once." And as we look at these changes that many of you are wanting us to make, we have to do our due diligence. We have to seek out the professional knowledge to see what we need to do to make sure that we're not making the problem worse. It's not that we don't want to make changes. It's not that we don't want to listen to what you're saying because we are listening. So I just want to encourage you all to be patient with us. Give us a little time. As you can see, it takes a collaborative effort, not only on council's behalf, but all of the staff and all the professional people, um, who help us make our decisions. And we will continue to move forward with positive, meaningful change. So that's all I have, uh, counsel and, um, Ms. Brooks. And, um, we'll go ahead and move on down the agenda. Next item on the agenda, we have committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? No committee reports, okay? So we'll go down to the next item on the agenda. We have staff announcements.
We just have, um, just a few quick ones. I do want to remind counsel of a few upcoming meetings and events. This weekend, we will be celebrating early iron festival, so we're very excited about that. Next week, you do have your special meeting for an executive session related to the evaluations. And September fourteenth is the CML District Eight meeting in La Jara. And so I wanted to make sure and do a reminder for that. Um, then Chief Anderson and Harry just had two quick updates as well. So I could see Chief Anderson coming.
All right, I'll be quick. I know everybody's getting tired. Um, just a real quick announcement from our department. Just wanted everybody kind of be aware of where we're at with some testings that we've got going on internally. Um, just a vacant SWAT position for our ten-man SWAT team. Um, we did our testing. So just to remind you about what, what I'm getting ready to tell you. Um, I mean, I've been here twenty-one years now. I was part of the SWAT team for fifteen years. Obviously, I can't do that, you know, through the promotions. Anyway, Officer Taylor Birch. So she is our newest member of the SWAT team, and she'd be the first female ever on our SWAT team throughout the entire. I thought you guys would like to hear that. You know, it's, it's a little different, doesn't gain as much attention as Main Street, but it is exciting for us. She's still got a few things to do. So she's got a, a year of kind of being a grunt on the team to, uh, earn the stripes, but still has to go to her class in Fort Collins for her, uh, SWAT one, uh, certification as well. I mean, she can handle it. She, she did her time in the Marine Corps, so she's a tough girl. Anyway, just wanted to say that and let you guys know what we were doing. It's my update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Thank you. Congratulations.
And then Harry just had a quick update on the two wells that we were having issues with.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Chief, you can have all the attention on Main Street. You know, we, we talked earlier about Coal Park and, and losing that well, you know, or what we think we're going to probably potentially be a loss. Earlier in June, or the latter part of June, we also had problems with, uh, the plant well. So we have si- seven wells. Out of all seven, we had two down at one time. With that, uh, you know, we internally cut back some of our irrigation needs. Um, also with that losing Coal Park, that was part of the impact that we seen with the irrigation out in front of the PD. But since then, we've got that fixed and rerouted, so.
Thank you, Harry. And that's all we have from a staff update.
Okay, thank you, Harry. Okay, um, next item we have on the agenda, and the item, final item is, uh, under liquor licensing. We have a consent, um, calendar B. Counselor V Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar B.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay. Start voting, please. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to the last item on the agenda. We have, uh, council comments. I will recognize you as your mics are lit. Uh, Counselor, I don't know who did theirs first, but, um, so this time, since I started at that time, unless I care if I start this way this time, because I gave it to you all. Okay. We'll start at the end over here with, uh, Counsel Grego.
I think we're all counsel common dollar. We're a long meeting. I, once again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and, and public meetings like this are needed when you make decisions, hard decisions, you know? We need the input from the people. All right, not everything's set in stone. You, you put something out there and it has agree with, with the majority of the people. So I think having these conversations is great.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Counsel Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mine will be quick. Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that Adam State is back in session, and they're holding their first football game this Saturday. So if you can attend, it's versus New, uh, Western New Mexico State at five o'clock. Um, the other thing is that our healthcare organizations, um, that are licensed by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment have recently been, uh, required to mandate the vaccine, and we know that there are some, um, concerns from that from people in our community. So just support your healthcare workers through this time and give them some, um, hope and light if you can. Um, I think it's been a challenging time for healthcare the last eighteen months, and will continue to be a challenging time. So sending them my best wishes.
Thank you, Counsel Daniel. Counsel Hensley?
So a couple of things. So first of all, um, I, I feel, it's been a hard couple of weeks. I think there's been a lot of loss. And I definitely, um, we have somebody in our city, so Ray Smith, his son, um, passed away and just want to send, um, hugs and prayers to him and his family and to everybody at the city because obviously it touched our city really hard. Um, so I just thought I'd pass that on. The other thing, my, my slogan for the last year or so, especially when, um, businesses started to come back and, um, everybody, you see help wanted signs everywhere, um, everybody is shorthanded. I know even the city, we have, you know, even things such as when somebody has a loss in their family or illnesses and things like that, and we're shorthanded too. And so, um, that idea, my, my slogan has been, everybody's doing the best they can. And I think trying to remember that things may not be going as fast as they, they could, that, that idea there, we go into restaurants or stores or anywhere and, um, it feels like things are going slower, and why is this happening? But it's sort of take that deep breath. My thought is, I take that deep breath. And I just want to commend all of our city employees, everybody for how hard they work. They're doing a lot of extra to try to make things happen. And sometimes things are, you know, you have a well that goes down or whatever might happen, but that idea there that, um, everybody's working as hard as they can, that is working. And so just want to thank everybody for how hard they're doing and all the passion they're putting in for our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Counsel V Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I got three quick things. Number one, it's the first home football game for, yes, Adam State and Alamosa High School. Little rivalry game, they play Montevista on Friday night here in town. Number two is I got a, I just got a message from, uh, Rowena Martinez. She was the, the lady who called in from the hospital. She wanted me to announce that this Saturday, uh, the fourth, from ten to eight, from ten in the morning to eight PM on Main, in front of the VFW, they're having a marine toys for tots. So if you want to donate some toys. And then finally is this, is there, there's a man in our community who, who gets every morning and goes for a walk, like at five thirty or six in the morning, and he always takes pictures of where he's at. His name is Dave Harjes. He works at Adam State, and he's doing these walks for his own health and fitness. But he always, and he takes pictures of, of, um, different businesses and the park, and it's really cool what he does. And on top of that, he always picks up trash at our parks or on the street. So I want to give him a shout out. He would never come to a meeting like this, but I just want to tell him that I recognize him when I see him. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel V Hill. Counsel Broyles, do you have anything to say before I go to Counsel Carson? Okay. Counsel Carson?
I just wanted to, uh, to remind everybody that, you know, as, 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 um, bad as things seem sometimes, we sometimes forget that we live in a utopia. You know, the valley is a wonderful place, um, and it's easy to complain. But, you know, you go five hundred miles in any other direction, it's chaos. And so keep that in mind. We do live in a very wonderful place. And like somebody said earlier, you know, Main Street is the most contentious issue we have in our city right now. And so thank you guys for showing up. And, you know, appreciate the, the town you have. I just want to remind you guys, we do have a good city. We have a good city staff. We have good people in this valley. And so keep that in mind, it's been a rough couple of years. And, uh, just, you know, try to appreciate it. I just want to remind people to do that because we do live in a wonderful place. And I think we tend to lose sight of that sometimes. So thank you guys for showing up. I, I appreciate it. Counsel appreciates it. And, uh, you know, it shows that we love this town, we love this community. I saw tons of names and different, you know, geographic locations in those petitions, Ruthie, thank you. Thank you for always caring and, and, you know, standing up for what you believe. And so, again, we do live in a really wonderful place, so just appreciate that. And keep in mind what they said. This is the most contentious issue we have right now. Our PD's doing a great job, you know, we, we, as, as bad as things seem sometimes, um, we live in a great place, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel, um, Carson. Counsel Hensley?
So I left this out because I really thought Counsel Broyles would bring this up, but you must be getting late. But, uh, so First Street, I'm, I'm sure most of you have driven First Street and how nice it is. And, oh my gosh, my car is just going so smooth. But it came in under budget. And so just want to thank, and if, obviously, um, how enjoyable it is to go on First Street. And thanks to everybody for all their hard work on that.
Okay, thank you, counsel. That's all of the comments. Um, I'll just wrap it up real quick. I just want to, once again, just let everyone know, and, and in times like we're going through right now, just be mindful and thoughtful of the way you treat other people, whether you're doing it on social media or you're doing it face to face. Um, because I've found that in life, you'll find people going through three different stages. Either they're going through something, or they've just gone through something, or they're about to go through something. And you never know what stage that person is. And you might be that only little bit of hope that gives that people hope to keep hanging on and moving forward. So I encourage everyone to be considerate of others and all your dealings. Thank you. Have a good night. This meeting is officially adjourned.